Okay, we're live.
Kenmore City Council is now in session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember file?
Yes?
We're doing the roll. Councilmember file? Yes, okay. Councilmember Curtis?
Here.
Councilmember Marshall?
Present.
Councilmember Shabnik?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbert?
Here.
Councilmember O'Kane? Councilmember O'Kane, can you hear us? Is she frozen?
Here.
Great, thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. If you will all please join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there is no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express views on issues that are important to you and to the community. And you can email your comments, which a number of you did. And you can also raise your hand during this Zoom portion of the citizen comment if you want to speak. But you cannot do both. Either we will read your email or you can speak. It's one or the other, not both. Kelly, if you please.
All right, so you guys can hear me? Okay, okay. I did receive quite a few numbers of comments today. And like the mayor said, there'll be three minutes apiece. I'm gonna have a little, excuse me, I have a little timer right next to me. You'll probably hear it beep. I'm gonna read each letter up to the three minute mark and then I'm gonna stop and move on to the next one. I tried to kind of have this up on the screen so we could kind of follow along, which might be helpful. I apologize for any mispronouncing. I may spell your name if I'm not quite sure how it's said. So I will take the first one. All right, so Gary Wang. This is an email Friday, July 10th at 7:20 PM. Dear Kenmore City Council members, my name is Gary Wang, resident of the Kenmore area for most of my life and a proud alumnus of Kenmore Junior High and Inglewood High School. I'm writing to express my utmost opposition to ordinance number 20-0509, which proposes to acquire 7023 Northeast 175th Street, Kenmore, Washington, 98028, through the threat of condemnation or by condemnation for the city's public work facility. The property is owned by Chinese immigrants who have played an important part in the Kenmore community for over 40 years. There are also currently nine local small businesses that operate out of the warehouse in the proposed property. It is both manifestively unethical and exploitative to even consider the possibility of using government authority to forcibly displace minority-owned and local small businesses at any time, let alone during this COVID-19 pandemic, which is causing such unprecedented economic stress on small businesses and families. The owners of the property do not want to sell and they should not be forced to sell the property. They have worked so hard to obtain and maintain. Moreover, if the ethical concerns were not enough, this proposed action flies directly in the face of stated city council goal 2020, 2021 priorities, which are to support existing businesses, number seven, and foster and create a welcoming, diverse, affirming community, number eight. Additionally, the public works project is not included in the city council's stated priorities. And by virtue of being a maintenance and operations facility on the lakefront poses a clear and additional threat to the environment and nearby water as well. The site selection process was also incredibly flawed and clearly shows the city's values in terms of prioritizing property that is easier to take from small business owners rather than plywood supply, a massive company that would lose only a fraction of its property in the proposed plan. The scoring difference of three points between the first and second options is both arbitrary and insignificant. A total of four points are given to the first option for ownership and timeframe, which are artificially inflated, given that there are nine businesses present on the property and the fact that the owner's is not a willing seller. It is evident that scoring numbers were carefully chosen to avoid the harder but more ethically appropriate choice of negotiating with plywood supply or reevaluating other potential options. I urge the city council to see critically about how this potential forced acquisition will reflect the city's lack of support for local small businesses, complicity in creating a less diverse and inclusive business community and disregard for the local environment. This choice is clear. Choose a different property for the public works project or defend this costly and flawed proposal to the community and to the court during future litigation. Thank you for your consideration and for your votes to empathically reject ordinance number 20-0509. Sincerely, Gary Wang. That was just at three minutes. Next one is from Tanitha. Friday, July 10th, 2020. Received at 7:22 PM. Thank you, the City of Kenmore Council, to hear our voice in regard to the Business Agenda Ordinance Number 20-0509, authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation or by condemnation for the Kenmore Public Works Operations and Maintenance Facility. My name is Tanitha Collier. As a concerned citizen during this once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, we should be careful and mindful what we're spending budget on. The COVID-19 doesn't seem to be under control in the near future. There are a lot of uncertainties in a way. To forcefully acquire land and spend a big chunk of money to a property isn't a good idea. There's land that belongs to the city that we can use without tackling our budget. The city has already overspent on its revenue. We are feared that when things with the COVID-19 go wrong, we won't have budgets to get what the community needs to survive the pandemic. To the council members, the property stated in this business agenda is right in the center of retail businesses and park and recreations. To have a facility for public works operations and maintenance there, is it good for our community, question mark, for our children? We love going to the Rota Dendrum Park. We can't imagine to have public works operations and maintenance facility close by the park and Smamish River. Please vote no to condemnation of this parcel property for our community. We hope our voice matters and thank you for letting us voice our concerns. Sincerely, Tanitha. Next one, Keith Collier. Sorry, I just want to clean my thing. Friday, July 10th, 11:59 PM. Regarding Business Agenda Item Ordinance Number 20-0509, to whom it may concern? Regarding Authorization of the Acquisition of Real Property Via Eminent Domain for the Kenmore Public Works Operations and Maintenance Facility, I would like to enumerate my concerns. The Kenmore budget is in a state of errors at the moment, meanwhile, dealing with the further struggles caused by the global pandemic. Perhaps now is not a good time to be acquiring more private land or repurposing for public use. That particular district is heavily industrial already, wasting valuable space that could be a bestie on a riverfront beauty. It might likely be more prudent at this time to sell some of the public industrial lots and support more private commercial and residential growth. I thank the council for their time and consideration. Please vote against this condemnation proposal mentioned above to preserve the current mixed-use nature of this area of Kenmore waterfront. Other existing land owned by the City of Kenmore would provide an amicable solution for all parties involved. Thank you. Counsel, okay with how I'm reading it? Am I going too fast? Okay?
No, you're doing fine.
Okay, from P A E W Bennett. Saturday, July 11th at 9:52 AM. As a property owner in Kenmore, please allow me to comment on the agenda topic for the forthcoming agenda item. I think he's just giving a link to the agenda bill. Two main points on which I would appreciate your consideration. Number one, city budget. Hold on, sorry, I apologize. While I understand the city has allocated funding for the acquisition of property for a permanent public works maintenance and operations facility under its current capital improvement plan, the city is only a few months away from completing a two-new-year budget plan for '21, '22. As cities, counties, and states grapple with likely massive budget shortfalls due to COVID-19, it seems prudent for Kenmore to pause or delay measures that would evict current businesses and citizens from their property to pursue this public works project until it becomes clear that the next budget will continue to support this project. Location. It is highly disappointing that this location would continue to be seen as fit for heavily industrial use 20 years into the future. Per the document linked above, the site was chosen based on a 10-to-20-year outlook. Both from an environmental impact perspective and a face of Kenmore to the world perspective, this seems very inappropriate. Do we want our city's main thoroughfare to continue to appear ugly and industrial? Would it not be better to utilize this location's proximity to public transit to develop a shared commercial residential policy consistent with many neighboring cities than to build an industrial facility on this major artery? Thank you for your attention to this matter. You guys see the name here, S and Bennett. Next one is Dan sellshomes.com. Received Saturday, July 11th at 5:15. Hi Kelly, I'm writing to ask that the Kenmore City Council revise its plan to forcefully propose the property located at 7023 Northeast 175th Street, Kenmore, Washington, 98028 to force minority owner into selling against their will is difficult to fathom in our current political climate. I have lived and worked in the Kenmore area for over 25 years as a real estate agent. I believe in the improvements that have been made in recent years to make Kenmore a more livable city. I hope to see such decisions continue in the future. And I appreciate all the work the city manager, city council, and other staff have put into making Kenmore a better place to live and work. However, what measures have been put into place to support minority businesses in the city? I can't imagine forcing a minority business owner into selling their property against their will. The city should be doing everything in its power to show support to minority businesses, make them feel welcome, make other minority businesses want to be in Kenmore. Be a leader in the effort to bring equality to the city and surrounding area. Don't force a minority-owned business to sell its land and warehouse for the city's benefit. Don't force a minority owner to sell against their will. Don't give the impression you're negotiating good faith when you haven't. And don't put the city in a position where media scrutiny will uncover on all white city council and white city manager taking the property of a minority owner for its own purposes. Please rethink how you are conducting business in this new age of equality. Please make decisions for the greatest greatest good of all people and please give minority concerns higher priority than the city council needs. By the way, I've CC Jesse Jones with Cairo Seven News in the hopes that he and his crew will take up an investigation and bring this story to the attention of the greater Seattle community. Racism needs to be exposed at all levels of government. Please think at a deeper, broader level in your city planning. This decision involves real people with real needs of their own and 40 years of ownership in the community. Doesn't that mean something? Sincerely, Dan Richards, RE/MAX Northwest. Joseph TSAI received Sunday, July 12th at 6:45. Greetings, my name is Joseph TSAI and I'm a family friend of Alyssa Chow. I'm writing this email with the hope that the following comments will be read at the next City of Kenmore meeting. Alyssa has expressed to me that the added stress that her family has experienced as a result of ordinance number 20-0509, I desire to let my General Assembly know of my support for Alyssa's family as well as express my concern for how the family has been impacted during this process. It is my hope that the City of Kenmore and Alyssa's family can reach a mutual agreement for how to proceed regarding ordinance number 20-0509, which would benefit all parties involved before any further steps are taken. As a proud resident of Kenmore, I can only hope for that to be the case. Thank you for your time, Joseph. Susan Ma, M.A. Received Sunday, July 12th at 8:33. Dear City Council members, my name is Bill L I A N G, a resident of Smamish. I'm writing to express my utmost opposition to ordinance number 20-0509, which proposes to acquire 7023 Northeast 175th Street, Kenmore, Washington, 98028 through the threat of condemnation or condemnation for the city's public works facility. This property is owned by Chinese immigrants who have played an important part in the cultural growth of the Kenmore community for over 40 years. For nearly 10 years now, the owner has offered his place for Chinese dancing and regional cultural activities as free community services. More than 100 people use this property for dance practice every week. There are fewer and fewer places of such cultural facility in the region for Chinese immigrants to participate in our dancing and community activities. One group of people travels all over the area from east of Smamish and south of Kent to this property regularly. While we're at it, we bring people into the city and patronize local businesses as additional benefits to the city. As immigrants, we are marginalized population and a sense of community is vital to us and our livelihood. This place is our home and it's part of our life. The city's action will destroy our Chinese community in the region. I strongly urge the city council to think about how this action will affect our group's support to the local businesses and the Chinese community and vote to reject this ordinance. Thank you for your consideration and for your votes to reject ordinance 20-0509. Sincerely, Bill L I A N G. Need a sip of water. Okay, from PAP, P A P P, Sunday, July 12th, 11:58 PM. Dear Kenmore City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present my response in regards to ordinance number 20-0509. The attached letter contains my objection and urge for the city council to vote no for the ordinance. This is his attachment. I want to thank you for giving me your time. My name is Pop S I N T E P B A D O N, one of the many grandchildren of S O M C H A I and Mrs. V I L A I Chai Patanapong. And I urge the council to vote no towards ordinance number 20-0509, authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation or by condemnation for the City of Kenmore Public Works Operations and Maintenance Facility. I've spent all of my childhood and then some in Kenmore, attending Lockwood Elementary, Kenmore Junior High, and Inglewood High School. And I'm very familiar with the lakeside city that has provided me with a home all these years. A home that my grandparents, immigrants from Asia, were able to create for their entire family and future generations. They sought for a better future and opportunity for their children. And because of the city of Kenmore, I was able to be born. Witnessing the city I called home for more than half of my life attempt to condemn our family's American dream by biased and unfair process is distressing. I shall make out these points below. Chapter 18.26, Regional Business Zone, by attempting to acquire the real property, the city will contradict the initial intent of the regional business zone stating in the very first sentence, "The property houses offices, compatible storage, light manufacturing uses, service, serves the regional market areas and provides significant employment opportunities with 10 businesses running out of the building." Condemning this building makes absolutely no sense when this property serves exactly the intent of the city zoning. Timing of the condemnation, as mentioned in point one, this property houses 10 small businesses in the city of Kenmore. The hardest hit being small business owners. I question the timing of attempting to proceed with this ordinance as it's extremely unfair to the employees of those businesses and their families. Not only did the city notify the tenants without the property owner's knowledge, but are now creating additional stress for these small businesses and employees in times of need. Site study. Many of the evaluation criteria are very biased and without notice are input of the property owners. Additionally, where are the comparisons of this property study to other potential properties that are also deemed fit by the city? It's only fair and honorable practice from the city to provide comparisons for the property owner to understand the use of condemnation against their own property. Criteria four, Expansion and Growth. This property is about one-third's wetland and doesn't allow for growth. Additionally, with the purchase of adding a public works maintenance facility at this location would greatly endanger and bring potential damage to the wetlands itself. Criteria number five, Environmental Impact, as stated in criteria number four, providing services to trucks and equipment next to wetlands extremely increases chances of hazardous material damaging the wetlands and the wildlife within. Another concern of the neighboring property, Lakewood Villa Mobile Home Park, which houses many senior citizens whom are already at great risk during this time of COVID-19 pandemic crisis. We are at three minutes. I'm gonna go ahead and end that one. I do want to remind folks that the council has received all of these in its entirety. Next one is Mark Prince, Monday, July 13th at 5:47 AM. This is Mark Prince, 1933055th Avenue, Northeast, Kenmore, Washington. I'd like to have my citizen comment attached in both PDF and Word format, read completely into tonight's city council meeting record. I'm gonna go ahead and open that up. Members of the council, thank you for your time. Mark Prince, resident of Kenmore for over 55 years. My comment is on tonight's agenda ordinance number 20-0509, authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation or by condemnation for the public works operations and maintenance facility. I oppose this ordinance. It is not in the best interest of the city, local businesses, or the residents of Kenmore. Why is the city trying to acquire this property? Somehow the city forgot the promise it made to the citizens of Kenmore about the use of our City Hall property. He doesn't include a map. When Kenmore City Council property was first developed, the north end of the property area shaded in yellow, added for reference, was banked for future development for city operations needs. The current uses were only to be temporary. So why does the city need to forcibly take away the property that would displace at least seven businesses that now many not want to continue to operate in our city when the city already has the property right here at City Hall? On many levels, this is not the property that the city should be trying to acquire, especially through the threat of condemnation. This property has a very large wetland and the city and its citizens have fought hard for years in protecting our sensitive shoreline and wetlands from this type of operations that could contaminate them. Your responsibility is, excuse me, real quick. Your responsibility is for the protection of these sensitive wetlands and from the potential irreparable environmental damages from operations like a maintenance facility so close. For the city of Kenmore to arbitrarily determine that this one parcel is the best suited for its public works operations and maintenance facility still displays the major flaws in the city's selection process in trying to obtain property. A public works and maintenance facility need to be able to be able to operate with all types of equipment running 24/7. Adjacent to the property on the east side is a community to 20 residents. And in Kenmore's comprehensive plan, this property is also adjacent to plywood supply properties be designated as regional business with mixed use where we could see multifamily developments in the future. To have a public works and maintenance facility right in the middle does not match Kenmore's land use plan for that area. The comprehensive plan map also acknowledges this property's inlet and the importance to our fish habitat. Some salmon species federally listed as threatened. That is needed for the juvenile salmon before moving into the lake. Any changes that the city may try to apply to the sensitive wetland would also be devastating to salmon and other wildlife. Please answer, why would the city try to acquire under threat of condemnation this parcel of land that is adjacent to the Smamish River with a large year-round water inlet with a sensitive wetland for use of a public works and maintenance facility where the threat of leaching of chemicals of other pollutants through ground off and ground saturation? I do need to stop. We're at three minutes. Okay. Go on to the next one. RJ Solomon. Monday, July 13th. Dear Mayor Baker and City Council of Kenmore, I am to urge you to vote no to ordinance number 20-0509, which proposes to acquire 7023 Northeast 175th Street, Kenmore, Washington, 98028 through the threat of condemnation or condemnation for the city's public works facility. Ordinance number 20-0509 plans to forcibly take the property from a minority-owned local business. This business is owned by the Chapiatong family, Chinese immigrants who have been an important part of the Kenmore community for 40 years. They are unwilling to sell their property and forcibly taking it from them would be financially irresponsible. Most importantly, it would be an act of systematic racism and oppression to displace minority-owned businesses in lieu of a global pandemic. The cost of this acquisition during the time of this pandemic is unnecessary and not fiscally responsible. They are proposing $5.1 million. This does not include tenant relocation, which they will have to pay for litigation fees because we will be taking them to court and construction fees. In October of 2019, they cited in a meeting that they would be putting together a task force, financial sustainability plan to figure out how to avoid trajectory of overspending and facing a deficit in the operating budget. The current COVID-19 pandemic should urge the City of Kenmore to fund public health and safety and focus on the survival of local businesses and the livelihoods of its citizens. The seizure of this property is a direct conflict with the Kenmore City Council priorities 2021, which outlines goal number seven of supporting existing businesses within the community. Mentioned, and it looks like he has a link to your council priorities. This proposed action flies directly in the face of stated city council 2020, 2021 priorities, which are to support existing businesses, number seven, and foster and create a welcoming, diverse, affirming community. Number eight, it's both grossly unethical and exploitative to even consider the use of government authority to forcibly displace minority-owned and local small businesses at any time, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. The owners of this property should not be forced to sell the property. They have worked so hard to obtain and maintain. The Chapiatong, I am gonna get that right, family are a testament to the real American dream of immigrants. Forcing them to sell decades of hard work without time for due diligence, without the acknowledgement of the minority-owned business and families that would be impacted is only the work of systematic racism and oppression. Oppression. City council, I implore you to reconsider forcing a local minority-owned business to sell to sell. It's for the city's benefit. Do not put the city in a position where an all-white city council and manager take the priority, excuse me, property of a minority owner for its own purposes. Please rethink how you're conducting business in this new age of equality and breaking down systematic oppression and racism. Sincerely, RJ Solomon, family friend of Wilson, T S O I. Sip of water.
Kelly, if I had this list, I would be happy to help you out here.
No worries. I'll let you know. If you guys are okay with how I'm reading it, I'm just trying to kind of get us through and we have a lot to do, so. J O Y L Y N Yang, Monday, July 13th, 8:37 AM. Dear Kenmore City Council members, as we all attempt to navigate survival through a global pandemic and its consequences of death, unemployment, and war, you are making the conscious choice to make matters worse. You are choosing to fan the flames and bring additional burden to a family that has raised their children in business in Kenmore. I do my best to not wade too deep into the waters of cynicism, so I give you the benefit of the doubt. I believe you have good intentions. Public works are important and you are simply trying to fulfill a need for the people of Kenmore. I believe you are acting ignorant of the hurt you are causing. After all, we all act based on the information we know. Thus, I and many others hope to enlighten you to the harm that your proposal brings. As you read this letter, I compel you to exercise patience and empathy and at its conclusion, as you reflect on your actions and determine your next steps, I compel you to practice compassion. The owners of the lot at 7023 Northeast 175th Street, Kenmore, Washington, 98028 run a small business. It's a legacy family business began by an immigrant grandfather who fled the terrors of war in Vietnam to live the American dream. Through sheer grit and determination and more struggle than you and I will likely ever know, he created a world of opportunity for his children and their children. His daughter now proudly carries on his dream to provide for her own daughter, my best friend. The land is a family heirloom as precious as their home and that warehouse is decades of memories and businesses that thrive despite the odds. That is the legacy of the land you are attempting to take under threat of condemnation. We are currently all doing our best to weather the storm that is the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. The impact of this pandemic has already been immense and we are now nowhere near the end. Most small businesses in this country already fail under the best of circumstances. COVID-19 has significantly enhanced the challenges these businesses face. And every day, we've seen generational legacies and dreams shattered and poverty take hold of those who are simply trying their hardest to do what they love and feed their families. An additional consequence of COVID-19 has been an uptick of both conscious and unconscious racism towards the Chinese-American community. Let me say now, I do not at all assume racism as your motivation. I genuinely believe you have good intentions. However, young women who look like me are being spit on when walking down the street. We're getting Wuhan virus yelled at us as if we are to blame for the disease. The owners of the land you are choosing to take away sit at the intersection of these two currently extremely vulnerable communities. Their business thrives despite an economy that would assume otherwise. This land is also used by nine other businesses in Kenmore. I say with confidence, the survival of these 10 businesses is the result of sheer determination. I know this proves inconvenient for you. It would be much easier if they had failed like so many others, yet they stand. Are you really willing to punish your constituents for working hard and continuing to survive? We're at three minutes. I'm gonna go ahead and end. Next one is Graham L E K U T A I, Monday, July 13th, 8:37 AM. Dear sir and madam, thank you, the Kenmore Council, for the considerations regarding to the ordinance number 20-0509, authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation. I have major concerns with the environmental impacts as there is no environmental site assessment study available to the public for viewing. Almost half of the property is considered a wetland area. Construction development encroaching into the class-one wetland area will harm wildlife in the immediate area and the nearby river. There are other options that have less environmental impacts with minimum structures built and less construction costs from taxpayers. The city should perform its due diligence to save our environment and to save our taxpayer money. Please consider voting no to condemnation of this parcel property. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you for taking the community's voice of concerns and taking the consideration to reject the ordinance number 20-0509. Graham L E K U T A I, PhD, a concerned citizen. Anna Richards, Monday, July 13th, 8:40 AM. My name is Anna Richards and I've been a resident of the Kenmore Bothell area for 23 years. I grew up here and went to school here. I have always loved Kenmore's support for small businesses, but through a friend, I recently found out that the city plans to harm the local small business community. It has come to my attention that a local minority-owned business is being forced out of their land, warehouse space in Kenmore. I am writing to express my utmost dismay at this proposal. Please refer to the reasons below. Number one, the city is forcibly trying to take the land from minority business that has owned the land for 40 years and do not wish to sell their multi-generational business. This business is owned by Chinese immigrants who have been a part of the Kenmore community for decades. Their property is used and occupied by nine local businesses in the area. These businesses depend on this warehouse space for their survival. The seizure of this property is at conflict with the Kenmore City Council priorities 2020, 21, which outlines goal number seven of supporting existing businesses within the community, mentioned in the March 2020 agenda, linked to the agenda. The cost of this acquisition during this time of this pandemic is unnecessary and not fiscally responsible. They are proposing $5.1 million. This does not include tenant relocation, which they will have to pay for litigation fees because I know the owners will be taking them to court as well as construction fees. In October of 2019, they cited in a meeting that they were on a trajectory to face a deficit in the operating budget and even created an initiative to create a financial sustainability plan. A deficit in the operating budget and even created initiative to create a financial sustainability plan. The decision to spend this type of money during a pandemic is absolutely irresponsible. The city also stated that they negotiated in good faith when in reality. There was not a discussion with the owners. They simply gave the owners a number without any chance for them to voice against either the proposal or the stipulated value. Their selection process and ranking system have been equally as arbitrary in example criteria of timeframe when they are definitely not a willing seller. Please oppose this proposal. Thank you for your time, Anna. Next one is T A I and then Chain of Run C H A I N A R O N G. Monday, July thirteenth, eight forty six AM. Regarding city council regular meeting agenda, Monday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty at seven PM. Thank you, the city of Kenmore council to hear our voice. I'd like to voice some of my concerns. Regarding ordinance number twenty dash zero five zero nine authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation. Or condemnation for the Kenmore Public Works Operation and Maintenance Facility. Budget and spending, as we're in the middle of a global pandemic, having a significant impact on our community is now a good time to be spending a large sum of money. To acquire land, demolish existing structures and build out a maintenance facility. Would it not be more reasonable to use existing? To use existing that the city owns to reduce the investment cost? Would it not be better to you save this money to help the community in these uncertain times? Location. The property in question is in the middle of a retail business near community parks and is bordered by the Smamish River. Would having a public works facility in the middle of this be a good idea? Shouldn't we be concerned about potential hazardous material containing the river, contaminating the river? The property in question has limited no, has limited no expansion ability without forcing out businesses or residents. And the neighboring properties. Wouldn't it make more sense to use existing city land rather than forcing residents and business owners? Out of rightful property and potentially forcing them out of our city. Please vote no to condemnation of this parcel property for our community. We hope our voice matters and thank you for letting us voice ours. P O R N P A T S O R N C. Counsel doing okay? Yes. Okay. Next one is Robbie L E L I E M. Monday, July thirteenth, ten fifty three AM. We are submitting the attached letter of support. For SOM CH AI chai patana pong and Mrs. V I L A I owners of property of seven zero two three northeast one hundred seventy fifth street, Kenmore, Washington, nine oh two eight. We respectfully request that the honorable mayor of the city of council and the council members to vote no on the proposed ordinance. Thank you. Very much for your time and consideration, Robbie and Marita L I E M. I'm going to open up their attachment. Dear Honorable Mayor and council members of the city of Kenmore, we Robbie and Marita Lim are writing this letter in support of our dear friends, Mr. SOM CH AI chai patana pong and his wife, Mrs. V I L A I. And strongly urge you to vote no against the authorization. Of ordinance number twenty dash zero five zero nine. Please consider the following and retract the ordinance. Years ago, Mr. And Mrs. Chai. Patana pong immigrated to America, to America from Asia with their young family. After much hardship, they found the camera property which is close to their home. With hard work and perseverance, they have established their small business and raised four productive and responsible children. They are hardworking, law abiding US taxpayers and US citizens. They love living in Kenmore and have contributed to the flourishing development of the city of Kenmore. The said property has much family history where Mr. And Mrs. Chai of Tana Pong and their children have worked hard together to make their lives better. They are profoundly distressed by the city of Kenmore proposed ordinance to condemn their property in order to force them to sell. They do not want to sell. It seems that the city of Kenmore targeted easily an obedient minority group like Mr. And Mrs. Chai of Tana Pong. In selecting their property to condemn in order to force them to sell. Their selection score of four and criterion number seven is very biased. Single ownership is preferred. It should not. It should not be even considered as a selection point. The selection criteria number eight to a number eleven are also biased and unjustified. See selection criteria sheet. Your selection process was conducted by the city of Kenmore managers and the TCF architecture decisions were made only by those attended. What and where were the inputs from the owners involved? And what are their civil rights? It's really unsettling for a small business property owner to be threatened by the city of Kenmore. It also seems that the city of Kenmore takes the opportunity of the COVID nineteen crisis to proceed with condemning the said property. While most citizens are preoccupied with the health and economic impacts of the pandemic. When did the city of Kenmore diligently seek public opinions regarding this proposed ordinance? The said property has been providing affordable rental units for small businesses. This is vital to the economies and deployments of the citizens. Of the city of Kenmore, small businesses. Business owners livelihood and survival will be in danger if the said property is forced to sell, especially during the devastating COVID nineteen crisis. There will be negative impacts to the neighbors, especially the mobile park to the south where many senior citizens live. While our country, while our country, many states and cities are dealing with the negative impacts on the health and economies due to COVID nineteen. And social unrest. I'm going to go ahead and stop. We're at three minutes. Again, council has received each and every one of these. Next one, W T I B at frontier dot com, Monday, July thirteenth, eleven thirty eight. Dear Mayor and council members. Of the city of Kenmore, my name is Irene Bun. I am one of the daughters in law of SOM CH AI and V I L A I. Chai Botanica Pong. I am writing to ask you for your help for my family to vote no to ordinance number twenty dash zero five zero nine, which propose. Poses the acquisition of their seventh. Of their seven zero two three northeast one hundred seventy fifth street, Kenmore, Washington, nine oh two eight through the threat of condemnation. Or condemnation for the city's public works facility. I have known the Chpaya Tana Pong family for over thirty five years. And throughout my time around them, I have had the privilege to witness. How this immigrant family, both parents and their four children, put in all their resources and energy as they work towards the American dream and hope of a better future. With all their sacrifices and hard work together as a family unit, they managed to grow their small family business. Into a successful company that provides job opportunities to many, including myself when I was a fresh graduate for which I will always be grateful. In nineteen eighty three, when SOM CH AI and V I L A I finally moved the family business from their home basement to the newly built office warehouse at seven zero two three. Northeast one hundred seventy fifth street. It was truly official that the American dream they were striving for had finally come true. As an immigrant and minority, you can imagine the pride and joy. Of both parents and their children and seeing their sacrifices and hard work finally be realized in the form of this land and building. To the city of Kenmore, this may be a piece of property selected as ideal for a public works facility. Determined by arbitrary numbers from a scoring system, but for our family, it's more than a property. You see, it's SOM CH AI and V I L I hard earned prized possession and their legacy which holds a special sentiment for our family. To be forced to sell at a price the city deemed as far market, fair market is not fair. When you're not willing to sell something that is worth a lot more to you, isn't it? I urge you to please vote no to ordinance number twenty dash zero five twenty dash zero five zero nine. Thank you for your time and understanding. Respectfully yours, Irene Bun. Like I just read this one. But I'm like, go ahead. Maybe I didn't. Actually, yeah, you know, mayor, they, they're submitted twice.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go to the next one.
Yeah, that's great.
Oh, and also this person, Pete, this. Then they. Yeah, they also submitted twice. Um, I think she was clarifying some attachments that she didn't think I could open. Okay, we'll go to Wilson T S O I, Monday, July thirteenth at one o'clock. Members of the council, thank you for your time. My name is Wilson T S O I of Michael Tio, one of the four children of SOM CH AI and V I L I Chai Batana Pong owners of the real property at seven zero. Two three northeast one hundred seventy fifth street, the one that the city of Kenmore is forcing us to sell against our will under the threat of condemnation. Our parents and us four children immigrated to the Seattle area in nineteen seventy seven. Throughout our school years, us four siblings routinely worked after school. It wasn't uncommon for us to work into the weekend as well. We knew that. We knew then that as new immigrants to this country, a strong work ethic is necessary in order for us to survive. We are taught to pull our own weight. And be productive members of the community. As of today, all of us siblings still work together as well as several of our spouses and children. It's truly a family business in all aspects. The property at the heart of this meeting today is the result of that strong work, work ethic that was instilled in all of us while we are still. While we were still teenagers over forty years ago. This property is a legacy to our parents. SOM CH AI and V I L A I, how they behaved. How they brave the unknown and coming to the States and sought out the American dream and made it come true. It is a place where I point out to our. Two adult children and hopefully the many generations to come that in the US of A, you can achieve great success with strong work ethic. And so I'm CH AI and V I L A I having now retired for several years would often return and visit Asia. This past year, spring of two thousand nineteen was no different as far as visiting Asia is concerned for them, but what is different now is the outbreak of COVID nineteen. With their advanced age increasing COVID nineteen cases and deaths in Washington state and international air travel coming to a screeching halt. They have stayed put and indefinitely postponed. Their return flights to Seattle as their age group is the most vulnerable to this pandemic. It is of great unpleasant surprise that the city of Kenmore is serving a condemnation letter in an attempt to take away this American dream. A legacy that we immigrants had built. The site criteria worksheet also seems highly biased, convoluted and non sensational and deeming our property. As un uniquely qualified for its public works. In fact, taking away a whole. Taking away a whole of Chai Patana Pong property displacing ten different small businesses during this. Already trying time demolishing a thirteen thousand square foot building, placing hazmat bunker next to a mobile home community. And all of this right next to Smash River wetland is something that the city should uniquely avoid, especially. Considering many various plywood supply blank slate parcels next door as shown in the site criteria workshop. One does not need a worksheet to figure that out, does it? City council members, I strongly urge you to do what's morally and ethically right and vote no on ordinance number twenty dash zero five. That's an error. It should be zero five zero nine. Nullify the condemnation acquisition of seven zero two three northeast one hundred seventy fifth. There are many other more suitable sensible parcels for a public works facility in Kenmore. Don't disrupt the many small businesses that are already facing hard times due to COVID nineteen. We're at three minutes. The next one. Ray, last name H A N A S H I R O, Monday, July thirteenth at one fifty four. Dear sir and madam, I'm writing to express my opposition to ordinance number twenty dash zero five zero nine, which. Tramples on the rights and wishes of small business owners, particularly small businesses, which are owned and operated by people of color. The decision to forcibly drive out small businesses is ill advised and tone deaf considering the state of our nation. Please explore other options which show support to communities of color and the businesses owned by people of color. Thank you. Ray H A N A S H I R O. Bruce. Gardiner G A R D I N E R, Monday, July thirteenth at two fifty nine. I am writing in opposition to ordinance twenty dash zero five zero nine by which the city of Kenmore seeks to condemn property adjacent to the Smamish slough. I think this is a very bad idea. This property under question lies adjacent to the Smamish slough and contains extensive wetlands. Both of which would be significantly damages by the operations of utility maintenance and operations platform. The city has not performed an environmental impact study for this property and would find major problems and strong opposition. Opposition from a neighboring senior housing project that is adjacent to the property. The city has zoned this property for business and multifamily residents. And in industrial use such as the city plans would be contrary to the city's own zoning. Kenmore is planned on a delightful, thoughtfully planned downtown urban core, the utility maintenance operations and motor pool does not fit in such an urban plan. But the location would be squarely in the heart of the city. Lake Point, if it ever gets built, would be nearly adjacent to the property. And again, again, a motor pool would not fit with the multifamily. And retail business plan of that development. It does not appear that the city is actually considered the most logical and appropriate. Appropriate property for the city. Murphy's auction, which is adjacent to city hall next to another utility. And currently being used for similar operations to what the city plans to develop. Bruce Gardner. Next one, Christine S I S M A E T, Monday, July thirteenth at three thirty nine PM. Dear Mayor, City Council and City Manager, I respectfully request that you vote no for ordinance number twenty dash zero five zero nine today, Monday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty. In consideration of the people of this land, thank you for your time and attention. Respectfully, Christine S I S M A E T. Let me see if I can get this bigger. Okay, so Ethan Chai Tana Pong. Bellevue, Washington, received Monday, July thirteenth at three forty six PM. Dear Mayor Baker, members of the Kenmore City Council and City Manager Carl Lindsay, I'm writing in opposition to ordinance number. Twenty dash zero five zero nine, which authorizes the acquisition of the property located at seven zero two three northeast one hundred and. Seventy fifth and Kenmore by condemnation. My grandparents have owned a property for nearly forty years and they, along with my aunts, uncles and my dad. Have poured their time, sweat and energy building their investment into a successful minority owned business. They have made Kenmore their home. And have been part of the city's business community for decades. They have been good neighbors and valuable business stores. The property may just be a piece of land to you, but not for me. It's a place I hold close to my heart. Some of my earliest memories are tied to this property where I learned to run and play and visit my relatives. It is also a place where I first learned the word wetland and why wetlands were important. The back of my family's property is adjacent to the Smamish River with a year round water inlet and a sensitive wetland. Growing up and playing in the parking, in the parking area of the property, I witnessed Canada geese, ducks, herons, eagles. And occasional beaver and salmon, all while left that became real instead of just pictures and books. As a result, I learned early to be respectful and productive, protective of our natural resources. As city leaders, your responsibility is to protect these critical areas from potential and irreparable. Irreparable environmental damages like the proposed maintenance facility you want to house on our property. For the city to arbitrarily take. My grandparents' property and make it home to your public works operation and maintenance facilities beyond baffling. Irresponsible and destructive, not just to my family, but to the environment and to our city. By condemning my family's property, you are taking what does not belong to you without adequate explanation, input or logic. By the way, our property sits in the middle of the street and does not have any room for future growth if. Growth if that is in the works. By putting a maintenance and operation facility adjacent to the wetland. We're opening the door to the very real threat of chemicals and other pollutants leaching into the ground. And water runoff damaging sensitive fish habitat that is essential for juvenile salmon before they migrate into nearby lakes. I urge you to vote no on this ordinance to find another site. Does more suitable for your maintenance facility, one that would not harm our environment nor my grandparents' property. Sincerely, Ethan. Joan Reed Hughes. Monday, July thirteenth at three fifty four. Dear ladies and gentlemen. Of the Kenmore City Council, I'm running to urge you to vote no on ordinance twenty dash zero five zero nine. The immigrant property minority business owners at seven zero two three northeast one hundred seventy fifth street, Kenmore, Washington, nine eight oh two six are not willing sellers and should not be forced. To sell their property against their will. Do treat them. Do treat them fairly with respect. Do communicate with all parties involved openly and honestly. Do allow time extension. For the property owners to do their due diligence during this challenging pandemic. Do encourage. And support these existing ten minority businesses to foster and create a welcoming, diverse, affirming community. Do choose an alternate location for your public works project that does not pose a threat to the environment or adversely affect one hundred people, their homes, livelihoods and family. Legacies. Do assign appropriate scores in the prioritizing process. Do remember that families live. And work in your city and their children attend schools in Kenmore. Do the right thing. Vote no. My name is Joan Marie Yanow Hughes and my husband is David John Hughes. We are both graduates from the University of Washington School of Health Sciences. A privilege we were afforded primarily because of the hard work and countless sacrifices made by our immigrant grandparents and parents from Japan and Greece since the early nineteen hundreds. Their sacrifices combined with a strong emphasis on education and family values and hard work. Allowed us to benefit from the opportunities and successes we now enjoy and continue to pass on to our future generations as American citizens. Likewise, our dear parent, dear friends. Excuse me, who are likely, who are like family to us whom we have known and loved for over thirty years, the Chpaya home family have worked long and hard to ensure and secure. And is hard to ensure a secure and, and successful future for the future generations. They have made it. They have. Made it known to you that they are not interested in selling their property, but rather strongly hold to their intentions to own it for generations to come. Please respect them and their property fairly. They're upstanding Asian American immigrant family. We can attest to their unwavering integrity, strong work ethic, family values. Community building, law abiding and generous spirit shown towards all people that they encounter, live. And work with. Thank you for your serious consideration on this urgent matter for this beloved and highly respected family. Sincerely and respectfully, Joan Marie and Dave Hughes. Is council still able to follow along with me? You can see the letters on my screen. Okay, sometimes there's a delay, so I just wanted.
Yep, no, it's working well.
Okay, from Flair D I M A P I L I S, Monday, July thirteenth. Three fifty eight PM, to whom it may concern, I must respectfully request that you vote no for ordinance number twenty dash zero five zero nine today. Thank you for your time and prompt attention to this matter. Flair D I M A P I L I S. Stephanie S I S M A E T. Monday, July thirteenth at four oh nine PM. Dear Mayor, City Council and City Manager, I respectfully request that you vote no for ordinance number twenty dash zero five zero nine today, Monday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty. In consideration of the people of this land, thank you for your time and attention. Respectfully, Stephanie S I S M A E T. All right. I L Y N E McIntosh. Monday, July thirteenth at four twenty. Dear Kenmore City Council members, my name is Lynn, I mean McIntosh. I'm not a resident of Kenmore, but I'm writing to you. As a Democrat who believes in our civil rights, this property at seven zero two three northeast one hundred seventy fifth street, Kenmore, Washington is owned by the family of our personal friends. I'm willing to. I'm writing to oppose ordinance number twenty dash zero. I'm writing to oppose ordinance number 20-0509. I believe they made it clear that they do not want to sell. However, there's a threat of imminent domain, especially during a time a pandemic, which doesn't give the family enough time to research about the proposed project. Here are just a few points for your perusal. Site selection, you chose a location which would disrupt and cause hardship to 10 small businesses instead of doing further research of finding a better place for your proposed project. Timing, you are proposing this acquisition during a pandemic. Environmental humanitarian impact, this property has wetlands and a salmon habitat. Close by is a senior housing project, a mobile home park, which would be, which would be affect elderly and low-income residents as well. Unethical behavior. City representatives solicited the property without the owner's knowledge and permission, then informed the tenants that this was a done deal. This is unethical and unacceptable as no deal was made. Zoning, this property isn't zoned for a public works facility. Thank you for the opportunity of allowing us to provide our insights. We hope you'll take this into consideration on voting no to ordinance 20-0509. Sincerely, L Y N E McIntosh. Eva S I N T E P P A D O N, Monday, July 13th at 4:42 PM. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Ava S I N T E P P A D O N, a resident of Kenmore for over 25 years. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a statement in opposition to city ordinance number 20-0509 to be voted on today. History of this property at 7023 Northeast 175th Street. I'm a daughter, I am a daughter of S O M C H A I N B I L A I, Chaya Patanapong, owners of the property. My parents are currently in Thailand and not able to attend the meeting today due to COVID-19 closure of both countries before their scheduled return date. My parents started a small business 43 years ago when they and us four children arrived in the state of Washington as legal immigrants in 1977, when I was 16 and the youngest sibling was just 12 years old. Despite our young ages, the entire family worked hard, but in the long hours and total dedication to building the family business. Little by little, the family business grew, and my parents found this property by the water in 1983, which they literally built from ground up and moved the family business into. Since then, it's been more than four decades of continued hard work and perseverance to support and pay for this property. This is what went into making this property, the entire property of which the city is now looking to just forcibly take from our family. Instead of it being the owner's choice and their property rights to hand the property, which is rights to hand the property, which is the fruits of our entire lives, labor down to our children and not selling at any price. Condemnation is so wrong and so unfair to any property owner who has always been law-abiding, tax-paying citizens who believed in hard work and responsibility all their lives. We feel especially targeted by the city who doesn't seem to think twice about taking our properties because we want it. All during the COVID-19 lockdown, as we had no opportunity to act and defend this action appropriately, and the city is already forcing the vote on it today. The city had quietly started the entire process of site selection and condemnation back in 2019 before COVID-19 without property owners' knowledge at all. But only came to light to us around COVID-19 when the country and the state was beginning to close and everyone was still shell-shocked from the unprecedented, unprecedented event was so unfair, rushed, and heartless. Should the city be so casually condemning citizens' property in any times, but especially in this tough economic and COVID-19 time when not all businesses even are allowed to reopen yet? We also don't even know how long COVID-19 will be with us and continue to negatively impact our economy into the future. Shouldn't the city endeavor to live within its means and not be course right, especially when they are already land on the land on the current City Hall's property, which was already set aside for public works facility from the Star Plus One other lot right on S R 522, which the city had already acquired for public works facility as well, plus at least 17 other city-owned properties below and not harm nor destroy small businesses, their employees, and their properties at will. Partial list of city-owned properties. Could any one of city-owned properties be used for a public works facility below is only a partial list. We had time to look up. We're at three minutes. Moving on, Scott Chow, Monday, July 13th at 4:46. Dear Mayor, City Council, thank you for your time and attention. My name is Scott Chow. I manage the Asian minority-owned properties for S O M C H I, Chaya Patanapong, and ask my council members to vote no regarding ordinance number 20-0509, pin number 4164100270, due to the following. Site selection criteria scores were arbitrarily and incorrectly assigned to favor condemnation of pin number 4164100270. This is a multi-parc, parcel business site. S O M C H A I uses property to store goods and merchandise containers when his business requires, so that this is part of a larger-owned, multi-parc, parcel business in Woodinville and Lake Forest Park. The front storage yard and the back of the parking lot is used to store and park 40-foot containers when this, when his Woodinville facility or Lake Forest Park is at capacity through the year. Unusable land area of only 1.49 acres due to environmentally sensitive wetlands should immediately disqualify S O M C H A I's parcel since a minimum of 1.5 acres was needed. There is no room for expansion and growth. Wetlands are 33% of total property parcel, resulting in inefficient use of Kenmore taxpayer dollars, as can only use 60% of the land. Land has no expansion possibility due to wetlands, so very limiting. Next-door plywood supply has almost no wetlands. How almost no wetlands area, so expansion is possible. Use of the property as a public works maintenance facility to potentially store hazardous materials which leach toxic chemicals into sensitive wetlands area jeopardizing fish and wildlife in the area and down the Smamish River, excuse me, into Lake Washington. Asian minority-owned property, Asian minority-owned property targeted as easy condemnation even when less suitable than adjacent properties. Agent for City of the Kenmore faith Roland, along with two public works people stepped onto the property without permission on June 26th, approximately 10 AM, and talked to various tenants informing them that they will be vacated. A city of Kenmore was condemning property and was, it was a done deal. This was illegal trespass, which harassed our tenants and shocked and scared them. This is abusive and forceful behavior on an Asian minority property owner and shows how we are being marginalized by the city. Tenants and owner will lose income from being displaced, and during this COVID-19 pandemic, many are in survival mode, and displacement is additional economic pain which no one can afford. Due to pandemic, S O M C H A I, C H A I has granted tenants to defer their rental payments, and the displacement of tenants will create more economic hardship for everyone. Adjacent mobile home park next door will experience excessive noise and hazardous material exposure to senior citizens. Please vote no to ordinance number 20-509. Thank you again for your time and considerations, Scott Chow. Anop Chaya Patanapong, Monday, July 13th, 4:48 PM. Mayor Baker, members of the Kenmore City Council, thank you for your time. I'm submitting my comments on tonight's business agenda ordinance number 20-0509, authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation or by condemnation for the Kenmore's Public Works Operation and Maintenance Facility. My name is Anop Chaya Patanapong, youngest of four children of S O M C H I and V I L A I, Chaya Patanapong, who are the owners of the property at 7023 Northeast 175th Street. The property that you are forcing us to sell under the threat of condemnation, this property has belonged to my family for 37-plus years, and I oppose this ordinance. This property sits between a mobile home park and plywood supply and is currently home to seven local businesses. Why is the city trying to acquire this property? Did the city consider other parcels at all? If the part, property is indeed intended to be the future home of the city's public works operation and maintenance facility, do you understand there's a large wetland on the property? Just by the nature of public works and operations, there is the very potential threat of pollutants and chemicals going into the groundwater. The city owns, the city-owned comprehensive plan acknowledges the property's sensitive wetlands and its importance to our fish habitat and other wildlife. Furthermore, there is no reason for expansion on this parcel. Should the city need to expand its site use? The city already has property next to City Hall that can be used to house additional city facilities and services. It makes complete sense to house city services together as a one-stop shop for city business. When my parents received the notification, there was no explanation of how the decision was reached. We were not informed if there were other sites in consideration, or were we notified of any recourse we could take. By placing the ordinance under your business agenda tonight, it appears you've already decided. I hope that is not true. As elected leaders, you are aware of our community's needs and challenges. If you condemn this property, you will be displacing business owners during these uncertain economic times. You will also be taking property that would not be a wise choice for your maintenance facility, given the reasons I've mentioned. Please reject this proposed ordinance. Thank you for your time. Respectfully, Chaya Patanapong. We're getting there. Few more. Jeff K E N J R at AOL.com, Monday, July 13th, 4:55, regarding ordinance number 20-0509. While I'm not an expert on imminent domain law, I would like to admit that I'm well-bursted on human decency. I have known the BunTSOI portion of this family for 20 years. They are hard-working, kind people who do so much for so many. In reviewing the scoring of this property and how the condemnation has been handled, it appears to me to be an abuse of the imminent domain law, as in not, as in you are not giving just compensation, nor are you giving the family the time needed to present their case. I find it abhorrent that the city would try to extort this family-owned property during a pandemic and economic downturn. A minority small business owner should be assisted at this time, not taken advantage of. This is a poor misguided decision at best. I would urge the city council to consider the ramifications of voting to support this purchase. At a minimum, I suggest a delay, reassessment, and a fair offer. Please vote no to ordinance number 20-0509. Sincerely, Ann Freeman. We have Megan Lynn from Perkins Coie. Monday, July 13th at 4:57. Dear Ms. Chellin, please attach, please find exhibits for our public comment regarding ordinance number 20-0509, which is agenda item B I I A on the city council regular meeting agenda for Monday, July 13th, 2020. Megan. I'm gonna open up her attachment. Okay, looks like she has an attachment from, a memo from. This looks like it's packet material. Sorry, hold on just a second here. Stuff that was already given to you. Oh, I think I did open up the wrong exhibit. Sorry, council, hold on here.
Kelly, don't worry about it. You're doing a great job.
Okay, I'm trying to open up her attachment, but I'm not seeing it. Um.
You want to take a minute? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's like, oh, there we go. I mean, you need to come back to the one, to the actual hard email, which I'll do at the end. Um, start again. Alyssa Chow, dear Kenmore City Council members, my name is Alyssa Chow, and I urge you to vote no in relation to ordinance number 20-0509. My concerns are as follows. Scoring related to the site selection was very arbitrary and unfair. Many of the criteria characteristics were in direct conflict with the scores property one, property one was given. Specifically, the evaluation criteria of environmental impact, neighboring properties, acquisition, and development costs, and site transferability timeframe. There is a wetland that takes up one-third of the property that are unwilling sellers, and it borders 20 mobile homes. Why is the city going to spend $5.1 million in addition to litigation fees when one of the goals for 2021 is to create a financial sustainability plan to address an upcoming deficit? You choose to impact multiple businesses instead of plywood supply. A larger business has, that has land on both sides of 175th. This conflicts with your 2021 council goals of supporting existing businesses. You chose to move 10 instead of taking land from one business that would not be as heavily impacted. The city has not negotiated or treated the property owners in good faith as the out, as the ordinance outlines. Instead, a representative has gone to the property in question without the owner's knowledge to talk to the tenants, and the city has not faced, or the city has not facilitated negotiation. This property is a family's history, sacrifice, and a man's legacy. Please think carefully about the real human impact that this acquisition will have. Thank you for your time and attention, and I hope you vote no on ordinance number 20-0509. Felix T S O I F E L, so first name F E L Y X T S O I, Monday, July 13th, 5:04 PM. Dear Kenmore City Council members, my name is Felix T S O I grandson of S O M C H A I and V I L A I, Chaya Patanapong, the fair proper owners, the real property at 7023 Northeast 175th Street. I'm writing you today to express my complete and justified opposition to ordinance number 20-0509, which proposes to acquire 7023 Northeast 175th Street, Kenmore, Washington, throughout the threat of through the threat of condemnation for the city's public works facility. I'm asking you to say no to ordinance 20-0509. My grandparents are immigrants who have worked extremely hard to establish themselves in the United States and have since then provided commerce and a city of Kenmore jobs for the city residents and recreation for the community. My parents and their siblings have made countless sacrifices in order to contribute and support this business that provides for our family and for many other families, all of whom we care deeply for. According to City Council 2021 priorities, the city of Kenmore has claimed to support existing businesses, number seven, and foster and create a welcoming, diverse, affirming community. Number eight, we couldn't agree more with these values and hope that the city and our family can be in alignment when it comes to these priorities. Not only is our business minority owned and provides community for a diverse group of workers and their families, our business allows, or excuse me, our business also has been operating this way for 40-plus years. As if being the ten, tenure business community of the city of Kenmore claims to be in support of isn't enough, this particular property that my family has worked hard to acquire and maintain provides the space for nine other diverse businesses to operate along with health, health-focused recreational activities for the greater Kenmore community. Evidently, our family and business doesn't just claim the same priorities as the city, but we actually live and breathe the values of being welcoming, supportive, and diverse in our everyday lives. If we are able to actively put these priorities and values into action, we expect that the city will also uphold those values and their business practices. It's details like these that are missing from a seemingly arbitrary criteria that the city used to recently identify our family's hard-earned accomplishments as the number-one option. While this area has been our number-one option for many years, and this predatory style of forcibly acquiring land looks to be a little bit too familiar of a practice, please do not continue this harmful cycle. Please know that the practice, know that practices like this result in lasting harmful effects to our community, no matter the outcome, as our trust, justices, and respect have already been shaken. Please do not let it go any further. Aside from this plethora of social and human rights ethics that this ordinance calls into question, this particular public works project is not included in the city's council's stated priorities, and by virtue of being a maintenance and operation space on the lakefront poses a clear additional threat to the wetland ecosystem and ecology of the nearby water environment as well. During this time of environmental instability, it's crucial to make choices that do not put even the smallest ecosystems at risk. During this time of COVID-19, small businesses are economically stressed, and the last thing they need is to be displaced and taken advantage of. During this time of COVID-19, my grandparents are currently unable to safely return to this country from their most recent family visit to Bangkok, leaving us to, then we fight this fight for them in their absence. During this time of social change, minority-owned businesses long overdue are finding their voices and speaking up. And during this time of social justice, many individuals from many communities, both in Kenmore and outside of Kenmore, are asking you to vote no. I need to stop. We're at three minutes. Um, I do want to pull up the one that I was not able to read. Bear with me here. Can you all see this letter? Can you see the letter from Perkins Coie? No, Deborah's shaking her head.
I'm, I'm seeing a letter.
Okay.
I'm not sure it's the one you want there.
I'm gonna stop and share again. Okay, are you all seeing the Perkins Coie letter now?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is the one I wasn't able to pull up over there. Ordinance number 20-059, authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation or by condemnation for the Kenmore Public Works Operations and Maintenance Facility, to whom it may concern. We represent property owners at 7023 Northeast 175th Street, Kenmore, Washington, parcel number 416410-0270, and are submitting these exhibits in opposition to the condemnation purportedly authorized by ordinance number 20-0509 for the Kenmore Public Works Operations and Maintenance Facility, which is an agenda item B1A on the city council regular meeting agenda for Monday, July 13th, 2020. Very truly yours. So Mayor, do you want me to go through these exhibits?
Mr. City Manager.
You, there's quite a few different exhibits and, and scoring and.
Or our city attorney, Mr. Ton.
Yeah, let me bring Dawn on. Just give me a moment, please. Dawn, oh wait, hold on. Dawn, are you with us? Let's see. She is not. Hold on just a second.
Our city manager is with us now.
Yeah, so far I have lost her, unfortunately. Rob, the question just being there's so many exhibits to that attached letter.
Perkins Coie.
Yeah.
Do we want to read all the attachments?
What time did that letter come in?
Um, I will tell you here in just a moment. 4:57. Oh, Dawn is calling me. Can you, council, just hold a moment?
Yes, please.
Hi, Dawn. I'm sorry if we lost you. Hi, Dawn, I'm sorry if we lost you. Okay. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, bye. All right, it sounds like somebody from that firm is going to be speaking tonight, and they just want to reference those exhibits. So we'll go ahead and let them do that when they speak. I don't think there was a thought that I would be reading the exhibits. So I'm not sure what the council wants to do at this point. We have lots of hands raised. I do have four other comments to read into the record tonight that are not related to the condemnation ordinance. There are four other various things. Do you want me to finish those up at this point? And then? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Let me do that. Just a moment to bring it up here. Okay. See if I can get this done. So, what does? All right, here we go. Can you all see my screen? Okay.
Yes.
So, this first letter is from Phyllis Finley. Monday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty at three oh two. Please read this rec, please read this during the public comment segment of tonight's council meeting and add the following to the public record. I'm requesting that city of Kenmore submit a comment by July fifteenth to Colin Ray at Army Corps of Engineers to require testing for contaminants of concern, C O C, in the turbid water that will be produced during the upcoming clamshell dredging of the Kenmore Navigation Channel. As you are aware, the contaminants are attached to the sediment, which is disturbed during dredging. This result may be the release C O C into the environment. It's important for the council and the citizens of Kenmore to know whether or not C O C are being released into the lake. It's of environmental and health importance to be aware of such contaminants that are likely to drift to the shoreline. People in the shore lake will be in contact with these contaminants, and lake dwellers will ingest them. The present environmental assessment omitted past studies and their decision-making. Past studies showed high levels of C O C with no known source. Ignorance may be bliss, but knowledge is the more sound option. Thank you, Phyllis Finley. Here's a letter from M. Ritter, last name P L E S S A S, received today, Monday at one fifty-six. Hello, I'd like to propose this item for consideration at tonight's Kenmore City Council meeting. Would the city consider using next year's twenty twenty-one Fourth of July personal fireworks ban in Kenmore to openly support veterans with P T S D? We would embrace this combat veterans live here. Please be courteous with fireworks. We would plan ahead of time. Those who want to set off fireworks will be able to do so at a safe, enjoyable location that respects the ban while supporting veterans. This would likely need to occur in partnership with neighboring areas that allow personal fireworks. We would offer a supportive infrastructure and environment to help those P T S D and pets to help them feel less isolated and ignored and better understood at a time when they needed, when they need a little extra kindness. Many more details would need to be worked out. I would be happy to be actively involved in their organization and planning of this initiative, if necessary or appropriate. If this acceptable, if this is acceptable consideration, what would be the next steps for going forward? Even if this initiative does not occur next year, the personal fireworks ban is a source of much discussion within the community. There are many different views and confusion about the ban and its enforcement. It might be helpful to provide additional information and details about the ban, why, why it's in place, what fireworks are and are not legal, what fireworks are and are not legal, and options for a Kenmore resident if they would be like legally light their own personal fireworks. Information about how the ban is enforced may also be helpful. Thank you for your consideration. Maylin P L E S S A S. Elizabeth Mooney, received Sunday, July twelfth, Perk Comment Council. Kelly, please find the attached letter to be entered during July thirteenth city council meeting, public comment. I would appreciate if you could distribute the letter to the council members before the meeting. I may be unable to attend via Zoom, so if possible, I request it to be read into the record. From Perk, do you all see the letter from Ms. Mooney? Yes, okay. Dear City of Kenmore Councilmembers, we wish to bring several issues to the attention of the council with regard to environmental issues in Kenmore. The Army Corps of Engineer, U S A C E, recently released an environmental assessment twenty twenty for the dredging of the Kenmore Navigation Channel. We recognize that navigable waters must be dredged to maintain a safe channel for ships and boats. However, we feel that the proposed monitoring during the dredging is insufficient to protect human and animal health. High levels of C O C contaminants of concern were identified in the Kenmore Navigation Channel as part of the environmental assessment, but the study did not discuss prior studies done in nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-six, and two thousand and fifteen that also found C O Cs. In addition, the study did not mention the presence of recognized toxic sites adjacent to the navigation channel. Further, Washington Department of Health demonstrated high levels of P C Vs and fish that are recently caught in recreational fishing in Lake Washington and Kenmore Dock. Therefore, we request the city, city of Kenmore asks that contaminant monitoring of sediments released during dredging and dewatering be included as part of the environmental monitoring protocol. Clamshell dredging will resuspend a portion of the thirty thousand cubic yards of material to be dredged. Further, we believe that the proposed turbid, turbidity monitoring during dredging is insufficient and support the U S E P A recommendation to test turbidity closer to the dredge site. My brain is starting to kind of mush together, I apologize. On a second issue, we support the U S A C E's recognition, recognition of sediment contamination and the decision to conduct upland disposal of dredged materials instead of in-like disposal. We hope that any upland disposal sites will not allow leaching or groundwater recontamination of our lakes and streams. Given that the navigation channel will allow Kenmore industry, industries to continue to work under current conditions, we believe that the city of Kenmore has a responsibility to ensure safe air and water for citizens and lake users. Dredging ultimately facilitates the continued operation of heavy industries, cement and asphalt in Kenmore. In particular, particulate and other discharges from the asphalt plant are sus, are suspects or concern that need to be addressed. Our last point is more to the future of Kenmore. We think the city of Kenmore should pursue alternative, alternative businesses and residents that are more in line with the vision of a healthy, thriving Kenmore that is citizens and neighbors' desire. Sincerely, Perk People for Environmentally Responsible Kenmore, Elizabeth Mooney. And the last one, Randy, B A N N E C K E R. Saturday, July eleventh at twelve sixteen. Dear Mayor Baker, members of the city council, I have attached a letter from the Seattle King County Realtors in support of your work on accessory dwelling units. Dear Mayor Baker, members of the Kenmore City Council, thank you for your continued work on the amendment package relating to accessory dwelling units, A D Us. As we wrote earlier this year, we applaud your attention to A D Us as a valuable housing affordability tool for Kenmore. A D Us enable greater utilization of existing houses and residential lots without a significant change in community character. The added units offer important, affordable housing opportunities for tenants as well as income for the owner, easing the owner's mortgage payments. In addition, A D Us offer important housing stability options for empty nesters and seniors on a fixed income. We believe the package you're developing is strong with regards to the issues we'll be discussing at council. We encourage a bias toward flexibility in order to promote A D U development. Specifically, we encourage the following owner occupancy. Owner occupancy is a legitimate concern. There may be value in distinguishing between exiting construction and new construction for, I think they meant to say existing construction, but for existing construction, we require owner occupancy at the time of permit application until the certificate of occupancy is received. After certificate of occupancy, no requirement. For new construction, require owner occupancy for six months to reduce the risk of investment speculation. This approach recognizes the reality that many builders are incorporating A D Us into their projects. For buyers, the A D U can make an important contribution to servicing, servicing the mortgage, making their purchase more affordable. The six-month owner occupancy requirement offers the city more assurance that the buyer will be a member of the Kenmore community, not an absentee investor. Parking do not require off-street parking, as it will restrict A D U opportunities on small lots. Again, thank you for your thoughtful work on A D Us. Sincerely, Randy, B A N N E C K E R. You can now not, now you don't have to listen to my voice as much anymore. That's it for the non-related condemnation. Mayor, we have at least ten people with their hands raised.
All right, let's go to that.
Okay.
We do have the option in our rules and regulations to carry this on at the end of the meeting, but I think people have been waitingly patient, and unless there's objections, we will continue on with this.
And our city manager's just pointed out something that is pretty valuable. We may be at our capacity as far as attendees. We're at, I think the max is a hundred and one, and so I, with your permission, Mayor and Council, I'm thinking I might promote some of the staff members to a panelist. They can be muted just to allow for more attendee, attendee spots, if that works. Let's see. At least the ones I recognize. Give me just a minute to do that. So Dawn and several staff members that are on, I'm promoting you to a panelist, but if you can still stay muted, that would be great. I'm just allowing for more attendee spot. Almost done. Okay, so, council, you'll see a lot of people on our panelist list from staff, but again, that's just to allow for more attendees. Let's see. So let's go back. All right, I'm going to take the first hand that I see, and it looks like it's John. Let's see. John, are you with us? John?
Hey, you got me there?
Yep, John, can you, can council hear John?
Yes.
Hey, guys, thanks very much. John Hendrickson, Kenmore, Washington. As far as accessory dwelling units, this is really bad legislation. You're going to turn every property in Kenmore from R six zoning to R eighteen, and no one knows about it. But even worse than that is this condemnation of the soy property, which I think is a disturbing example of hubris, elitism, and bullying on the part of the city. The agenda item from page fifty-three to fifty-eight shows no cost. You're not telling anybody how much you're going to pay for this property, and you're going to vote to give a blank check to pay god knows how much after lawsuits. You're saying you're going to pay it from the general fund, which means you're going to use council manic bonds and put us into debt without voter approval. You're not telling anybody about that either. And it violates your, your stated values of behavior. We're in lacking good faith, integrity, being proactive and collaborative. You're not doing any of that. You're clearly on the down low with this whole process. You're not telling about the cost, the debt, and even talk to the neighbors. Forty people live right next door in the mobile home, don't seem to care about them. The purchase price is absurd, while you're facing a near-term insolvency crisis. You rejected the Jerry Huck property, five point seven acres for one point three million or five dollars an acre. Here, for sixty percent less land, you're going to pay anywhere from five and a half to seven million, which is ten and a half times to thirteen and a half times more per acre, per foot. I'm sorry. Hey, you don't have my picture up there. The zoning that you have prohibits this use. I think it's an illegal use. Figure fifteen of the downtown plan says this is a regional business zone with P suffix overlay, requiring a master plan. This is one of our most highly valued commercial property in our downtown development. And the comp plan clearly lays out the legislative intent for that zoning, which is to phase out all industrial use. No new industrial use. Here, you're bringing in new industrial use. You wouldn't let anyone else come in here and do that. The Kenmore Rig's eighteen twenty-six oh four oh have prohibited use for vehicle refueling. Normally, Briar has refueling, and so does a punk and, and their public works. And Lake Forest Park has also refueling tanks over there. And in addition to that, you're prohibited from servicing trucks exceeding eight tons capacity and heavy equipment. Well, to be efficient in your public works department, you're going to need to do that. So it's not the highest and best value of the property, best use of the property. For the same price, you can go over and buy the entire Lake Point property. That the Ken, the, the King County Assessor has it as its highest and best value, and that's seven million dollars. What, you know, let's go, why pick on the little guy when you, that forty-five acres is just sitting there for the same price?
Dawn, we're at three minutes.
The Huck property, but I just want to get into this for this elitism. For the Huck property, you cared about five neighbors within a hundred and fifty feet of their property. You don't care about the forty people, especially the twenty-one homes in the mobile home right next to that property lot. Never even contacted.
Dawn, we're at three minutes. Council, we're at three minutes.
Well, I have to, you want me to cover the bullying because I've got a pretty good feel on how you're bullying?
I'm going to go ahead and change you back to an attendee. Thank you. It's not fair to give anybody more than the three minutes. So Vicki Grayland, I'm going to promote you into the meeting. Vicki Grayland, are you there? Vicki Grayland? Let's see if she's got her mic on. Oh, there we go.
Here I am.
Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, council, yes, go ahead, Vicki.
First, I went to support statements by Phyllis Finley and Elizabeth Mooney on dredging. And the numerous, and I also support the numerous letters and John Hendrickson's statement against the property acquisition for a public works facility for both environmental and social justice reasons. But my, my other comment for tonight is, last year I wrote to the council on the toxicity of the paint used in road striping on July twenty-third. On July sixth of this year, the city striped the streets in my neighborhood, and Jennifer Gordon and the city staff confirmed that the city is using the same paint. Briefly, the data sheet provided by Jennifer Gordon last year stated that the chemicals used are carcinogenic and cause birth defects. Since the city contracts with King County to do the striping, Mayor Baker forwarded last year's email to county council commissioner Rod Dombowski. He responded that the county has a policy of using the least toxic alternative in its operations. The city of Kenmore now has that same policy. Usually paints are toxic because they use petrochemicals with high volatile organic chemicals. There is a soy-based paint available with lower VOCs called BioStripe. According to the company's press release, BioStripe is the only USDA-certified bio-based traffic paint. The product is the only truly sustainable waterborne striping paint available. Moreover, the paint performs as well as petroleum-based paints, and it's economical. So I found this paint by Googling non-toxic road paint. It took me about five seconds, including my typing. I will send the information about this paint to the council and the city manager and to Jennifer Gordon and to the county for their research. I encourage the city and the county to always choose the least toxic paint available, which in this case is probably the soy-based paint. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Let's see. Our next person is Paul Wu. Paul, are you there? Paul, I see you've joined us, but you're still muted.
Paul, can you hear me now?
Yes, council, can you hear Paul? Okay, your three minutes starts now, Paul.
Okay, first, let me introduce myself. I'm Paul Wu, a semi-retired architect, a family friend for over twelve, forty years with the Chapatahna Palm family. The property in question was actually designed and built by me back in nineteen eighty-three, eighty-four. And I've since become a friend, a family friend, and I'm still working for them. For your information, for the last thirty-seven years before my retirement, I was a project manager for Puget Sun Energy in the facilities planning department. I did numerous facility studies, and let me tell you, the scoring on these criteria are subjective at best. So I think the scoring is unfair and really need to look at how they score the facility site selection. Okay, and last year, before all these come to surface, I was actually working with the family to develop a 40 unit, two, three bedroom apartment complex on the front side without touching the warehouse as income as a housing stock for Kenmore area, plus another 3,000 square feet of a street level retail and 100 underground parking spaces. So I think the best use is just what we were planning, and I hope that the council will move this property from your consideration as a site for an industrial maintenance facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to take John Peoples next. John, are you with us? John? Peoples?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now, John.
Great. Good evening. I'm John Peoples of 1923573rd Avenue Northeast. Mayor Baker, members of the Kenmore City Council, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to address you this evening. First item concerns the recent celebration of our nation's birthday on Independence Day. I must admit to enjoying the rumble of the illegal fireworks, but I don't enjoy knowing that anyone was hurt in celebrating our liberty. So I'd like to add my voice to the many I'm sure you've heard already in asking that the city foot the bill for a professional display next year. It would be an event that would bring the entire community together in common cause. The other item is that concerns a program recently put on by the city of Seattle for its municipal employees. The program related to this notion of social justice and invited employees to self segregate and attend different versions of the training in accordance with their skin color. I find this sort of thing abhorrent, and I asked the Kenmore City Council to avoid a similar program. I'll be watching, and I'll be sure to speak up if I suspect this sort of thing might happen in the future. Two wrongs don't make a right. Discrimination is discrimination. Racism is racism, no matter who does it. Every person has God given equal worth and value, and with clearest of consciences, I state that all lives matter. I, in other, as long as I've got time, I'd like to add my voice to the please vote no on the on the 200509. It sounds like you've got a really great community asset in these businesses, and it would be a shame to lose them. Lastly, as long as the sky is clear, there's a comet that's going by the earth that we won't see again for another 6,000 years. So check it out. And with that, I cede the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We have Rose joining us. Rose, are you with us?
Yeah, hi.
Hey, Rose. All right, your three minutes starts now.
Hi, my name is Chris Hendricks. I'm a resident of Kenmore, and I'm here to reiterate my support for reexamining the specifics of the budget allocation for public safety. Obviously, the situation with police brutality and the lack of accountability nationwide is ongoing and critical, but it's grim even when limiting scope to just the King County Sheriff's Office within the last six months. In February of this year, a report by an independent commission was published on a deadly officer involved shooting during a botched sting operation. In addition to substantial criticism of the internal investigation, the report from the deputies posed a greater threat to innocent civilians than any subjects of the sting as stray rounds fired by the deputies entered a nearby occupied apartment. More recently, at least one deputy posted inflammatory and graphic language about the tragic death of Summer Taylor to social media. This is a systemic problem, and it isn't a system that does not see itself as a problem. Self-directed reforms and internal investigations have demonstrably failed, looking both at King County and similarly liberal cities or cities that think of themselves as very liberal and very egalitarian throughout the Pacific Northwest and the wider United States of America. As a contract city, we are limited in our levers to address this, but given that, I urge the council members and city manager to critically evaluate what exactly we are investing public money in and how that matter, how that money might better fulfill the goal of public safety. Thank you for your time. I see the remainder.
All right. Got Bruce next. Bruce, are you with us?
Okay, sorry, needed unmute.
No worries. Hi, Bruce.
This is Bruce Gardner speaking. I want to emphasize tonight, I'm speaking as a private citizen.
Bruce, excuse me, Bruce had an email read. This, so this is not really warranted. He had an email read and he, he can't go twice.
Thank you. May I at least remind you I'm speaking as a private citizen with my email?
I understand that, and I do appreciate that, but citizen comments is clear.
I'll end my comment there.
Three minute session.
Thank you. Just for transparency, I do want to make it clear that when I bring somebody onto the meeting, they can choose to turn their video on if they want to. I'm not choosing certain people to have their video on. When they get called, they can decide. They don't have to. Next, we have Hannah. Hannah, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Great, Hannah, three minutes starts now.
Yes, I sent an email to Ms. Chalene and then the city council members at 411 PM today, but I did not see my letter read. So I signed on, hoping to just read the letter directly to you. I'll start. Dear Mayor and City Council Members, we are grateful for the opportunity to express our strong opposition to the proposed condemnation of the property referenced above, which is for ordinance 200509. We have known the owners of the property, Mr. Somchai and Mrs. Chapatah Pupong for nearly 40 years when they first immigrated to the United States. Their family started out the business in their garage, worked tirelessly to build the business they have today, and have made significant contributions to the community and local economy over many decades. As one of many users of the property, we are deeply distressed by the proposed seizure and condemnation of the property. It is my understanding that the owners do not want to sell the property and certainly do not want to cause undue hardships to us, nor to the small businesses and nonprofits that they allow to use the property. We started a nonprofit learning communicate, community three years ago, and the owners have generously allowed us as a nonprofit to utilize the space at the property rent free. Our nonprofit works with children from single parent and low income households on hands-on experiential learning projects. We provide our services tuition free for many of our students and could not have done so without Mr. Somchai's generous donation of their space. We know that they have also rented to numerous other small businesses over the years at very affordable rents. Having access to space to operate and start a new small business at affordable rents is a major factor that many small organizations, including our own, have been able to operate, grow, and provide the necessary goods and services to benefit the community. Not having access to the space moving forward will be detrimental to our ability to continue to work with these families in need. Due to the pandemic, we've had to do our outreach virtually, but we hope to be able to serve the families again when it is safe to do so in person. We are not in any capacity to find another space at this time, nor able to afford the rents when it is safe to return. Not having this property for our learning community would create incredible hardships for us and the families we impact. As one of many tenants of the property that would be detrimentally be impacted by the city's decision to move forward, we ask you to abandon this effort and instead identify an alternative location. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Hannah. Sorry, I didn't get your email. I was tracking those quite a bit. If you can try and resend it to me, that would be great.
Okay, I did. I resent it.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another person. S A N D O R T. Sandor?
Hi, my name is Sandora.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Sandra.
Thank you for your time, council members. I know that serving the community is is very important. I want you to know that I am a veteran and served our country, and I am speaking up for this family because I think the way that the council has gone about it is wrong. During COVID, their father was out of country, and even though they were notified per your guidelines, it was issued at a time when they were not paying attention to their mail. They were paying attention to how to keep their business thriving and actually, at some points, just surviving. They were installing PPE equipment and reading state and government guidelines and trying to figure out how to keep their employees safe and make sure that their families were safe for a return to work. This all happened during the stay at home order, and you know, I just think that that is wrong. I know that you guys are all descendants of white Americans, and I think that purchasing their property in this way is stealing from future generations. And so for that reason, I ask you to at least delay the order. In the very beginning of the meeting, you asked if there was any objections to the agenda. And though I am not a council member, I would like to voice my objection to the agenda tonight and postpone the decision or vote no. And Kelly, thank you very much for all of the reading that you did. I mean, that is a lot. But I want to read for record, the names. Ray's last name is Hanashiro. Christine's last name is Sismet. Stephanie's last name is Sismet. The owners of this property's names are Somchai Chapatah Pong, Vili Chapatah Pong. Joan Marie's middle name is Yano. Eva's last name is Sintepadon. Pap's last name is Sintepadon. Felix's last name is Choi. I take this time to do this because they are citizens. They are citizens who have spent their livelihood committing to Kenmore as their home and their community and where they've had their business.
Sandor, I think you're at, we're at three minutes. I appreciate you announcing those names for me.
I ask that you please consider them people and just not emails. That's why I took my time to read their names.
Thank you. Our next person is going to be Jerry Lutz, L U T Z. Jerry, are you with us? Jerry?
Yes, I am. I am with you. Thank you.
Great, your three minutes starts now.
Before we do start, I have one question, and it was a procedural question. When we sent the exhibits, we were hoping that you would be able to screen share them so that I could talk to just certain pages of the exhibits. So there are four exhibits, A, B, C, and D. And I don't want to try and go through them in any, you know, through the entire thing, because that'll take far more than my three minutes will allow.
Counsel, are you okay if I share a screen for the exhibits? Yes, Mayor?
Done that for anybody else, and I really don't want to start a precedent here.
Yeah, it's council's decision. I'll do whatever.
So I, I take it, Mary, well, actually, is there going to be a vote on that, or are we just going to not proceed with screen sharing?
That's, that's not policy. Policy is that we just, people have three minutes, citizen comments. And we've not done screen sharing since this is video, and we have not allowed presentations with PowerPoint. So you pass out something, we get it, and that's as far as it goes. I don't know. If counsel wants to do a screen share, then I'm certainly open to that. The problem is, we're starting something that we've not done before, and this is not what citizen comments is for.
Mayor Baker, if I may?
Counsel member file?
If this was a different time, and we could be present at City Hall, and a person could hold up an item, a picture, a poster, we would be able to see that. This is a different time, and I think we do have to make a little bit of latitude for the COVID crisis that we have now. If there's something that that could be useful.
Two thirds majority. Do I have two thirds majority? Do I have five votes? I see three. I see four. I do not see five. Thank you. If you want to continue on, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Baker. I'm, I'm assuming, I'm understanding that I should not be screen sharing. And, or may I?
Mayor, for clarification, are you, were the hands up to allow him to do?
Allow him, yes.
Okay.
So five votes to do that, and there was only four. We're spending far too much time on this.
Okay, so Jerry, you can go ahead and share your screen, or did you want me to share mine?
Actually, in a perfect world, Megan, Megan could share hers because I'm horribly technology challenged, but I do have the share screen button. No host disabled.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and just split up so we can save some time here. Hold on just a second.
Kelly, this has gone on for more than three minutes. We do have a lot to get through tonight, and we said no screen sharing.
Okay, I thought we did just, I thought you just said the council did say yes to.
Counsel said no. It was, we needed five votes. We only had four.
My apologies. Go ahead, Jerry. Your three minutes starts now. We're not sharing screen.
Okay, thank you.
Why we need the extra votes, but anyway.
Well, and actually, this.
It takes a super majority to overrule Robert's rules to suspend them.
I apologize. I misunderstood. Jerry, your three minutes starts now.
Thank you. And by the way, this goes, my name is Jerry Lutz. I'm an attorney with Perkins Coie, and I am here to represent the Chiapatahno Pong family opposing the resolution to condemn their property. And, and I want to start with a comment that under Governor Inslee's proclamations, as interpreted by the AGO, it appears that this action does not fall within the scope of meetings that can be held remotely. It has to be both necessary and routine, and the AGO recommends that you ask questions like, is it required to be considered at this time and cannot wait? Is that from a statute, a rule, a court order, a court decision, a contract, a legal obligation? Is there a legal or financial consequence of not taking action? Or some other reason that is essential to the agency to move forward at this time? I don't think that you can answer those questions. And, and as Ms. Chellin was trying to make accommodations to make sure everybody could even participate because it's such an important decision with so much community interest, you ran out of space on the system. So you don't know whether everybody got to listen or not. So I'd next like to go to the city of Kenmore's site selection criteria. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about is in your exhibit A, which is the city of Kenmore memo on this, the pages eight through 11 are the different sites that you're considering, which is basically this, these owner's property or the neighboring plywood supply parcels. But if you look at page 13 of the presentation, there's a drawing that demonstrates both the wetlands area on the owner's property and the broader area that is impervious surface on plywood supply. So there's a smaller area, there's a wetland, and this analysis is artificial in the sense that it's based on, it seems to be based not on acknowledgement of the the actual wetland and areas of impervious surface. And then the last, on page 19 of our exhibit A, which is the last page of this TCF architecture presentation, there is a drawing There is a drawing of what the facility was anticipated to look like. I have been told by one of the city's attorneys that you believe you can avoid the wetland. But if you look at our Exhibit B, we have transposed that design onto the site. And it requires a 46-foot wetland encroachment. That may not be right.
We're at three minutes, Mr. Moore.
We're already there.
Yep.
Um, well, I just urge the the council to either postpone or reject the ordinance. Thank you.
Let's see. Um, this person is named Concerned Citizen. Concerned Citizen, are you with us?
You need a name and city of residence. We can't have Concerned Citizen.
Yeah, it's just what's.
Hello, hi, I have a name.
Okay, great. Your three starts now.
I have a name and I have a face and I have a tardigrade. So um.
And your name, please?
Nigel, I saw you. My name is Ricky Choi, spelled T S O I, pronounced Choi. Um, and I am reading a letter on behalf of my cousin, Patron Sintepadon. Um, we're grandkids to Somchai and Vilay Chai Patanapong. So it goes as follows. Hello, council members. My name is Patron Sintepadon, and I am the grandson of the owners of the property in question. I wanted to call attention to the concerns I have with this ordinance and help explain why we are fighting to keep our property. As a resident of Kenmore, I have concerns over how city funds will be used for this project. One of the city council's stated priorities for the year is to create a financial sustainability plan. The goal of that plan would be to resolve a budget gap that will take place over the next six years. Spending $7 million to take my family's property seems to be in direct contradiction with this goal. Additionally, in reviewing site selection documents, I was surprised to find the point allocation and ranking results to be completely arbitrary. We scored high in the environmental criteria when a wetland takes up one third of our property. We scored high in regards to time, to timeframe, when we are clearly unwilling sellers. Oh. Sorry about that. And we scored high in the neighboring properties criteria when 20 mobile homes that house low-income seniors sit on the other side of the fence. The ranking guide contradicts the scores we were given. Aside from the concerns related to this project from a procedural standpoint, I have my own emotional reasons for disagreeing with this project. I'm a first generation Chinese-American whose life began here in Kenmore. I grew up going to this, I grew up going to this property, attending Englemore High School, and hanging out at Loggum Park with my friends. This building is where my family's story in America began. It's where my immigrant grandpa built his business to create opportunity for his children and grandchildren. This building represents the hard work and sacrifice of my grandfather and parents so that I could have an education and pursue my dreams. It represents everything about what being Asian American means to me. If this project continued, the city would get another building. Meanwhile, I would lose an heirloom representing 40 years of my family's history. My family is fighting for this property to honor my grandfather's legacy and the years of hard work and dedication that he put in so that we could so that we would even have that land. As a lifelong member of this community, I feel betrayed and now find that the place I call home no longer feels welcoming. So I urge you, council members, to take a close look at the real human impact of your decisions and vote no to to ordinance number 20 dash oh five oh nine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Will. Will, are you with us? Will?
Yes, can you hear me?
Great, Will. Yes, your three minute starts now.
Mayor Baker, Kenmore City Council, I'd like to thank you. I am an 18-year resident of Kenmore and.
Full name, please.
What's that?
State your full name, please.
Uh, Will Summers.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll have to start over. I've been a resident of Kenmore for 18 years. And I leased two of the spaces in the property at 7023. And I've spoken to other tenants in the building, and I know that uh being asked to vacate would be an extreme hardship for for my business as well as the other tenants in the building. And I would just ask you to reconsider taking the property from the urn. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Anya. Anya, are you with us?
I am.
Hi, Anya. Your three minute starts now.
Hi, I am Pastor Anya Helman, a resident of Kenmore and pastor here in Kenmore. Um, I know we've heard a lot of statements um that have touched on race. And so I just want to say something. I will take a step back for a moment and just speak about race in general. We really are kind of vulnerable right now because our council is an all-white council. And so I think it makes us um not aware sometimes of how actions that we take may appear as racist or may even have racist impacts. Um, and so I wanted to suggest, um, I I'd be interested in knowing any uh training that city council members have taken or plan to take around implicit bias. Or IDI, if you're not familiar with that, that's intercultural development inventory, um or other racism training. I wanted to just encourage that we consider the possibility of some required training for um all of council and for uh all of Kenmore staff, city staff. And then perhaps to post it somewhere on the website to state that all of our council members have undergone this. I think it may help us to become a bit more aware um of how actions taken could be received. Especially right now, I know a lot of times we think, well, this is Kenmore. We don't have racism here. Um, but I think we all know that we do. And as some of you know, I helped put together a prayer, a walking prayer vigil along the Burke, excuse me, Burke Gilman Trail. And many of those signs were defaced and torn and and put back up again. Um, and I heard so many people say, I can't believe this would happen in Kenmore. Um, and I think that's just a result of being white. We don't see it as much. And so as I've heard those letters being read and heard accusations sometimes of racism. Um, and I know many of you personally, and I know that you would never intend anything of that nature. Um, but I think that if we could start attending some of more, some more of these trainings and learning more about these decisions, the impacts that they make, that that could help us as a community. So that is all. It's great to see all of you.
Thank you, Anya.
Thank you.
We have Anita joining us next. Anita, are you with us?
Hello, yes, hello.
Great, Anita, the council can hear you. Your three minute starts now.
Yes, my name's Anita Choi. I live in Kenmore. I'm actually was a daughter of Somchai. And I've been, when we received the letter of to offer, we didn't know what to do. Everyone, the legal team that tells us is that you can't fight this, we can't do this. And when we faithfully meet with the uh made, meet with the city manager in January, we tried to see what else we can do to to ask to negotiate, and we found that this is what they want, this is what they do. Then we asked for site study, and I sent to the um our architect. I didn't know what is, we, we don't know how to fight the city. We don't know with the proper way. But the only thing that we tried to drum up to fight for our family right now, because last week, we had a chance, someone pointed out to us that look at the scoring, look at all this. Basically, the city has in mind that you want my property, our property. And you just choose study that within that, a good study should show you different size of shapes, different location to choose of to to select. And when I read a different criteria that you assign us, you assign us, you telling us you work this much before even speaking to us. All we ask today is that please allow us some time for you to study, to look at the points criteria, how we feel that is unfair. And how we feel that we've been targeted, because even the site, the property itself, it is according to your appraisal, it's 1.49 acres. And the city need minimum of 1.5, and we still selected, we still give maximum points of growth. We we give maximum point of 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 willingness to sell. We basically asked you if you can postpone or at least review some of the scoring that was telling us this is how much we worth. Because you want our property. And I thank you for this opportunity, because now my family knows how to do it properly, go through the channels. Our our grandkids, our children now knows how the system work in how to fight for yourself and how to fight for the family to the legal channel of working with the city council and have the secret city council hear what we have to say. So we don't feel like we're being taken advantage. We don't feel like we're being targeted. You know, we, we don't fight, we don't go and yell at you guys at the city or whatever. The final offer came in March, la- last week of March, that this is my final offer. And then we couldn't get any proper uh appraisal or people to work on it. So may I ask you to please at least postpone and look at the information that we have? And we thank you for this chance to say, because in the past, we have feel like our voices will not be heard. And if it was said, you, the city will have all the dispute to tell that what we said is wrong. We didn't respond correctly in the beginning, because we didn't know what to do. We were told that this is done deal. I mean, this is it, you'll lose.
Anita, we're at the three minutes. Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. All right, next, it's L I N M E, Lynnam, not sure. Great, looks like you're with us. Can you state your name and address? Oh, I think you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, can counsel hear her? Great, your three minute starts now.
Okay, so I'm Megan Lynn, and I'm appearing on behalf of property owners in the condemnation um matter. And I'm with Perkins Coie. I'm um just going to make a few points here. The site selection process appears to be based on inaccurate assumptions and incomplete information. For example, the fact that uh the usable area of this property is in fact far less due to the presence of the wetlands. That 10 businesses would have to relocate, including nonprofits. That cultural resources are being impacted, that there will be impact on residential neighbors. And that due to a creek on the property, there might be environmental issues that might not arise with the other alternative properties. For example, Clean Water Act and federal ESA consultations may be required here that wouldn't have been required for the adjacent plywood properties. Next, local codes for property zoned regional business east in chapter 18.26 do not in fact include utilities and government office offices as the permitted use. This is unlike chapters 18.27 and 18.25 that specifically permit utility facilities and civic and government offices as permitted uses. Next, it appears the proposed project is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, which assumes a more limited scope for this project. For example, it assumes a facility will house only 12 employees, whereas the in Exhibit A says that it'll house about 15 to 22. Finally, there's potential non-compliance with KMC 19.20.050, which sets forth the process for amending the comprehensive plan on emergency basis outside of the annual amendment cycle. There was no finding that an emergency existed that would require this amendment. And the fact that this is two years later suggests that there is no emergency. And it is not clear that there was concurrent adoption or amendment of the city budget. We ask that you please postpone this final action and allow these issues to be resolved. The family has a strong emotional attachment to this land, as you've heard, and we request that uh that be able to be able to review these, these issues.
Thank you. Was that the end of your comments?
Yes.
Thank you. Looks like I had one more hand pop up. Golf?
Uh, hello.
Oh, great. Golf, your three minute starts now.
Thank you. Uh, hello, council members. My name is Golf Sintepadon. Thanks for your time. Thanks, Kelly, for your reading and hosting. Uh, I just want to ask the question, does this need to happen now? And I say this while one of my friends has lost his restaurant job. Another friend, who's a nurse, has accepted that she might get sick at any day. And she talks with her fellow nurses about how to best reuse the limited face masks that they have. Some of my workers are sheltered in place with their children at home, now taking on several roles, a parent, a teacher, a spouse, a friend. Last thing that I that I would ask for is to add, yeah, another stress to any of these people. Especially Kenmore small business owners who have already been hit so hard this year. I think that now is the time for caring, for compassion, to take care of our fellow citizens, to do what we can to make it through. I love the city. I love running on the Burke Gilman Trail, seeing Boffaway change and develop over the years. I love that the city announced that June 19th will be celebrated as Juneteenth in Kenmore. Thank you for standing up for what is right. So to go back to, does this need to happen now? We won't see the benefits of any new construction for quite some time. This is a long-term investment, and while I think long-term investments are great, I'm just not sure that now is the time to start. Thank you.
Thank you, Golf. So we have Amy joining us. Amy, are you with us?
Oh, hi. Yes, I just unmute myself. Sorry.
No problem, Amy. Your three minute starts now.
Hi, my name's Amy Puananurak, and thank you so much for allowing public opinion on the ordinance number 20 dash oh five oh nine. I would like to express my concerns over the use of the public fund. Um, so first, I just want to say that, well, I'm just wondering if the city had put up public notice on site at all regarding the plan to spend $5.1 million fund. And second of all, from what I understand is that only 1.5 acres out of 2.3 acres of that land would be usable. So in my opinion, the dollar amount per square footage is very expensive, especially, you know, thinking about this time of um the pandemic and how the fund could be used elsewhere. Um, that could be more, you know, more useful for for public. And lastly, um with this such high dollar amount, is it fair to have the owners pay the expenses associated with the for sale? So I really, um, you know, want the council members to really think about when you want to vote for this or postpone this. Thank you.
Yes, hold on just one second. One more hand. Is it Cynthia? Are you with us? Cynthia? Ask her to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Your three minute starts now. Please state your name.
My name is Sunisa Legutai, and uh thank you for giving me a chance to express my concerns regarding ordinance 20 oh five oh nine. And I'm very concerned with the neighbors, who I understand that they are senior citizens. And uh if we uh if we put the maintenance facility there, which at some point it could be in operation 24/7, would that be disruptive and disturbing to them? And if the city plan to store any hazardous material there, and that could be harmful to the health and well-being. So please reconsider and vote no. Thank you for your time.
So we have one attendee that's on the phone. I want to unmute them because they don't have any way to tell me if they want to speak. This number is 2068535235. I'm going to unmute you. I'm going to unmute you. For the person on the phone.
Yes, this is Mammon Plasis. You read my statement earlier.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mayor, I am not seeing any more hands raised.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. We do appreciate them and we certainly do listen and take them into consideration. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 An aye. Councilmember file?
Aye.
Not hear your response. Thank you. All right, consent agenda stands passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 20 dash 0509. Authorizing the acquisition of real property under the threat of condemnation or by condemnation for the Kenmore Public Works Operations and Maintenance Facility. Ms. Gordon, Public Works Man, Operations Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So I hope you can see me okay. I'm in my car right now. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine.
Okay, great. I'm here tonight to talk about the ordinance number 20 dash 0509 authorizing the acquisition of real property under threat of condemnation or by condemnation for the Kenmore Public Works Operations Maintenance Facility. And I'm going to go over some of the background. I know the council is well aware of the background, but for the benefit of the audience, I'm going to go into a little bit of the details that we, about the background of the project. The city has been, in the past, primarily a contract city. And we've been contracting with the city of Lake Forest Park for public work services since incorporation in 1998. Back in 2016, we decided that we need to do, take a look at how we're providing services to our residents and the community. And we did a public work services analysis where we looked at how we are providing service. You know, if there was efficiencies that could be made and how we can improve our services to the community. From that study, we decided that we wanted to make some changes in the way we provide services. And we attempted to make some changes to the contract and discuss with the city of Lake Forest Park. But unfortunately, we were unable to kind of come to an agreement and they let us know in May of 2018 that we would, that they would be ending their service contract with us at the end of 2018. So we found out in May of 2018 that we would need to be starting our own public works crew. So we had seven months to prepare to do that and we quickly just discovered or decided on temporary site that we're located at right now on the corner of 67th Avenue Northeast and 522. And we do also have some office space located in the backside of the post office. So during that seven months, we developed those plans for our temporary site. We hired employees, we purchased equipment. And on January 1st of 2019, we started our own public works in-house crew. During that time of developing our temporary plan, we discussed the need to do a more comprehensive look at properties in Kenmore for a permanent location that would be sufficient to be able to provide the services that we provide to the city of Kenmore. During that discussion, we presented back in August of 2018. Our transition plan is when we really started having the conversation of finding a permanent home for our public works operations and maintenance, maintenance facility. We then also did some space planning and determined that we needed to get a minimum of an acre and a half size property for our permanent home to our public works maintenance and operations department. That takes us basically up to the last two years, we've been working on trying to acquire property, research property, go through the process of determining what the needs are and what property will fit our needs the best. The property that came to the top of the list is the property in question tonight located at 70. Sorry. I lost my spot in my notes here.
20 dash 0509, Jennifer?
No, that's, I'm sorry, that's, that's ordinance number, the property located at 7023 Northeast 175th Street.
Thank you.
And so we started going through the process of trying to attempt to contact the property owners early on. And so I'm going to turn it on, turn it over to Ken and our, our attorney to kind of discuss further and is he on here?
Yes, Kenan, you should be, yep.
I'm sorry. Hopefully it'll be light enough in here for everyone to see me. At, at this point, I just need to talk to you about the process and your role in the process at this point. You just simply need to make a decision as to whether or not you wish to proceed with acquiring this property. That doesn't mean that I have to file the lawsuit tomorrow. Doesn't mean that I have to file it next week. We can continue on negotiations. However, I will point out that there will be certain advantages to the property owner if you pass the ordinance. Number one, if you pass the ordinance, there will be no excise tax on the sale if they decide to voluntarily sell the property. In the current environment, that saves them probably on this purchase close to 4% on a sale. There is also no real estate commission, as would happen. In my discussions with the property owners, other counsel, I now understand that there's apparently three of them. Other counsel at a different law firm, there was other discussions that would be advantageous to them. The process, although compelling, you have to look at what is the basis for eminent domain and why do you as a government have the authority to exercise eminent domain? It is because no matter where you place a necessary public facility, there will always be someone that says it should be placed someone else, somewhere else. Don't take my property, take the person's next door. Which is why you developed the criteria that you did. Now, while there might be disputes as to whether or not the criteria is proper, whether or not the criteria should be ranked at a particular way, you will only be judged if the determination by the city council, based on your information that you have, is quote arbitrary, capricious or fraudulent. And the arbitrariness and capriciousness has to be so arbitrary and so capricious that it amounts to fraud. I purport to you that based on all the work that has been done over the last several years, that this was not an arbitrary process. It might not be one that everyone particularly agrees with, but it certainly was not arbitrary. I would also like to point out a couple of things that was stated in here. I heard a number of arguments saying, well, this happened in COVID and this and that. All of you were, have been dealing with me for several years now. You know that this did not all occur overnight. There have been discussions going on for quite some time. So this is not something that was particularly happened during COVID. And as a matter of fact, this process did slow down because of that. I also want to point out to you that many of the arguments that have been made are based on the false assumption that the city's plan involves invasion of wetlands. And that is not in fact the case. The city would be using the existing footprint and that was part of the criteria or the, or the thoughts that were utilized. There was also some discussion and inference that in today's world that somehow someone's ethnicity or race should be taken into consideration in these decisions. I will however, tell you that using race or ethnicity as part of site selection criteria is absolutely prohibited by law and it should never, ever be considered. Finally, if you do decide to go forward, what happens at that point is, is we continue to negotiate. If we are unable to reach an agreement, then the matter proceeds to the courts. At which point, the first question of is this a public use and is it necessary is determined by the court. This is clearly a public works facility, so it is a public use. And the court will not overturn your determination of necessary necessity if it is not arbitrary, capricious or fraudulent. So that is not going to happen. Then the question really becomes is what will be the compensation to be paid? And at that point, it isn't up to you. It isn't up to them. It is up to a jury of their peers. So citizens get to determine what the value of the property is. Again, it goes back to why do we have eminent domain in this country? Because that's how roads are built. That's how schools are built. That's how the city halls are placed. Things like that, because you don't always have choices as to where to put necessary public facilities. And that's why we have protections, limitations as to what can happen. That's why you have to pay just compensation. That's why you have to pay relocation to all those tenants. And that's what happens. So with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions regarding process. Again, the decision is up to you. But again, I point out that some of the process that they're pointing out, I'm hearing is, I'm, what I'm hearing is a strong argument that the property cannot be redeveloped. Although it sounds like the property owner might wish to do that. And that you really could not take ethnicity into account. That would be illegal to do so.
All right. So I imagine there's going to be a lot of questions here. So let's just go around. Councilmember O'Kane.
I actually just, I'm going to just provide a comment and, and I don't have any questions, but I do want to start with stating that I'm thankful for the public comment and emails from our community related to the condemnation ordinance of the Chai Patanapong family property for the Kenmore Public Workshop. This strong response called attention to issues related to this project that I believe need to be looked at more closely. Our city acted in good faith and diligently put together a structured analytical process to determine the best look to, for our much-needed permanent public workshop. Given the criteria, I understand why this property was selected and why the city has chosen to pursue condemnation and ultimately eminent domain to acquire the property if necessary. But this is where public input has shined a light on issues that were previously invisible or glazed over that raise concern with regard to fairness, equity and justice. And the moral obligation we hold as a city, as city council members, when we choose to pursue acquiring property through condemnation and eminent domain. In a country founded on property rights, this is a serious action that must be deeply considered. Does a public workshop rise to the level of displacing an almost 40-year minority-owned family business in the city of Kenmore? Does this represent what our community members expected when they voted for us? What does this say to our small locally-owned businesses? These are questions that we as a council need to look at. In addition to those issues, we are in the midst of a global pandemic and looming economic depression. This hasn't even begun yet. Is this a time where it is responsible to displace a longstanding local business? One that does house nonprofits and provides cultural benefits to our community? And equally, if not more importantly, our community has shined a light on something that we need to face as a council, as an all-white progressive council. Did we give adequate consideration to the value of this property to the Chai Patanapong family? Unintended bias and oppression show up in unexpected ways in inconvenient times and places. This is a family whose patriarchs moved to this family from Southeast Asia over 40 years ago. Where they were able to build a business and purchase this property that we are considering for our public workshop. This property that gave wings to the family's hard work and success. The location that provided the family's model for the American dream. It's a place of pride and legacy for this family. This, this property holds significance to this family that I do not believe that we, I can at least speak for myself. But adequately considered through our lens as white, non-immigrant Americans. A city that truly values equity, diversity and inclusion should include small minority women and diverse owned business criteria in the selection of a property. This is a small minority locally-owned business with almost 40 years of history in Kenmore. I reiterate this tenure because it is important. As an all-white city council, we miss the significance and importance of this property to the Chai Patanapong family. This was not a dollars and cents transaction for them. This was about something more. It was about family history, property ownership and a symbol of their success in pursuit of the American dream. We've heard it repeated several times from their family members. We could not see this until it was shown to us by our community. My belief, belief is that when you see a problem, you need to address it. We can do better. Upholding our respect for our local business people and families is important. There are real human impacts here. In order to do this, we must do this through a diversity and equity lens. In this case, we did not. We need further review before proceeding. And I will be voting against this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Kane. Councilmember Marshall.
I have no questions for Council Kenan Williams.
Councilmember Curtis.
I'll keep my comments brief. I first want to thank all the people who did take the time to share emails and in, you know, with Zoom. I think it brought up a lot of issues, many of which we've thought about and some of which we probably hadn't. To me, it feels a little like a SEPA review where all this public comment comes in and then we need time to analyze it and think about it. So my recommendation would be that we delay and not vote on it tonight. But we actually take some time to look at all the input that was given to us and provide a really full FAQ response to all the different issues that were brought up. That's all I have.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Well, I want to also thank all the folks who provided input. I've been uncomfortable with this process from pretty much the beginning and I think all my fellow council members know that. And what I appreciated about the comments is that it really crystallized for me my disc, why I was uncomfortable. And I think because it's, it was because our criteria, while useful, missed the missed our values, which were unrepresented there, our value in support. which were unrepresented there, our value in supporting small businesses in providing a welcoming community for everyone. You know, I'd like to say that we have a racially just value. I don't know that we've articulated that, but we should. So so those kinds of values weren't really represented in the criteria and so and I also would just want to thank Councilmember O'Kane for saying all of the other things that I've been feeling really crystallizing those thoughts as well, but I also would at minimum like to postpone this. If we are going to vote tonight, I would vote against it.
Councilmember File.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. First, I'd like to start with what I know. And as a newer council member, I, Councilmember O'Kane, we were not part of prior council awareness and feedback until we became elected, and even that would be limited to the time of our scope of when we came into office and what we were allowed to know. So I heard tonight a lot of thought and concern by families related to the Chai Pon Tom family. And I did not hear an absolute connection to race for the choice of property, but what I did notice is an oversight of the lack of understanding of implicit bias. And that's a piece that was overlooked because we do not have a diversity and equity philosophy or a policy in our city, and that's something I will be moving upon later. I've already made a public statement about that. We would have a loss of culture and practice in our community. That's a huge and heavy impact. I'm a daughter of of immigrants, and I think about how my my grandfathers on each side of my family came to this this country and how they first acquired property and success with a farm or business. And the hard work and the pride that's go into this. I'm a bit heartbroken. We have a problem. There's a culture impact that was not thought of. And I would move either we pause or I would have to vote no tonight. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
So I want to thank everything everything that my colleagues have said so far. I think we all know that finding a permit location for our public works yard is something that we as a city have been working on for over a year now. Our public works folks right now are housed in a too small temporary location on 522 that doesn't meet our long-term needs as a city. They're making do, but the location is not a permanent or even really a long-term solution for them or us. Our residents rely on our public works employees to keep our city working. Public employee, public works employees are who were out, you know, plowing and sanding and salting our streets during last year's snow event. They're the staff that keeps our surface water infrastructure working so that our roads don't flood. They're kind of unsung heroes doing important work that affects us all on a day-to-day basis. And it's in our best interest as a city to ensure that they have the resources to be successful in that job. Our staff and consultants have worked overtime in the past year to find a suitable location for this public workshop. Early on, we looked at a property in a residential neighborhood and were rebuffed by the neighbors, their main complaint being that it wasn't zoned properly. After that pushback, staff spelled out some criteria which council reviewed and approved and you know, we're a small city. We have six and a quarter square miles total, and out of that, only a handful of parcels are already zoned to allow for a public workshop. And out of those, a smaller handful meet our other criteria, lot size, et cetera. Using the criteria that we had, we landed at the property at 7023 Northeast 175th Street as the best candidate, and I agreed with that decision. The property's the right size. The building could be used, saving us the need to construct something new. We'd be able to preserve and rehab the wetlands at the back of the property as the Smamish River is something important to all of us. But eminent domain is not an easy thing to ever use. Eminent domain is set up to ensure that cities are able to build what is necessary to run the city, and it's also set up to protect the property owners and ensure that they receive fair payment for the property. But it's always uncomfortable with an unwilling seller to pull that trigger. I was aware that the family wasn't a willing seller, but I was willing to vote to condemn the property because as a public works facility is necessary for the city of Kenmore. But over the last couple of days, upon further reflection, I really think that we failed to look at this decision with an equity lens. For that reason, I'll be voting no tonight. I'm not necessarily voting no to the property permanently. I'm just saying no until we've done a more thorough vetting of available properties with an equity lens somehow added to the decision matrix. You know, I came into this just thinking that the property was a warehouse. I was not aware that it was used for cultural events. You know, and that is something that might have changed my perspective months ago when we were first looking at it. A warehouse doesn't add a whole lot to the community. It's just a place where people are storing things, a place where people are hosting dances and doing community gatherings that I may not be aware of. That's culturally important, and that's something that we should consider. I recognize there are going to be people unhappy with any site that we look at. This is our second site that we've looked at, and the second site where people have been unhappy with us. We need to be prepared for that and know that the work that we did to arrive at that decision was done correctly, thoroughly, and transparent transparently. I also just want to recognize all the hard work that our staff and our attorneys, our consultants have put in to get us to this point, and I don't want to undermine any of that work. They did the job the council directed them to do, and they did an exemplary job at that. My no vote tonight is not a reflection on them or their work, but a reflection on frankly, my blind spot through this process to the important and pressing issue of racial equity and justice.
So I think we're we pretty much have direction on this. Personally, I'm disgusted by some of the accusations that have been made tonight. They're totally uncalled for and totally unfair. I think it's absolutely disgusting that the community is stooped to levels like this. So do we have a motion? Councilmember Curtis.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this vote for at least a month until we can get more information on all the issues that were brought up tonight.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk, please take the rule.
Yes, Mayor, hold on just a second here. So postpone for at least a month until issues can be addressed?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember File.
I I need a quick clarification. You asked, you said you wanted to address what was for tonight, but you didn't say specifically what you want to be looked at with this motion.
I guess I would see it like a SEPA review. You just take all the information, you look at it, and we discuss it, and we have the council comes to some conclusion from that information. So I don't exactly know what we'll find or what conclusions we'll come to, but we will look at all all the information we were given tonight.
Thank you, Milton. Yes.
Yes, okay.
Motion passes seven zero. All right. Next item on the agenda is accessory dwelling accessory dwelling units code amendments. Ms. Bent, Community Development Director, and Ms. Anderson, Principal Planner. Is Ms. Anderson with us here tonight?
She is.
All right.
Councilmember O'Kane is trying to get your attention, Mayor.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Um, we've been on for two hours and forty-five minutes.
Yes.
At least a three-minute break and come back.
Yeah, you certainly can step away. It's not a problem. Does the whole council want three minutes?
I think that's great.
Yeah, I think that I agree with that.
Okay, three minutes.
Thank you.
Recording button. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, everybody looks to be back. I think Councilmember Herbig, I mean Deputy Mayor Herbig and Councilmember Marshall are, yes, they're all back. All right. So we have Mrs. Bent lurking somewhere, and there's Lori Anderson. All right, ladies, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, council, and we're here to talk about accessory dwelling units. This is following up from your direction and discussion on February twenty-fourth. So Lori is going to give a brief PowerPoint presentation to highlight what those recommendations were and also point out the differences between what you were currently thinking about in February and the Planning Commission recommendations. And because there are some substantive differences between those two recommendations, there is a need for a public hearing. So that is scheduled for the July twenty-seventh council meeting, and the public hearing will then allow the public to review the draft regulations and provide comment and feedback. So we're not asking for a decision this evening. We're just going to review those regulations and answer any questions that you may have. And on July twenty-seventh, following the conclusion of the public hearing, if there are no further changes that you would like to make to those regulations, you can certainly adopt the ordinance that evening. If there are any additional questions or changes, we would then have to defer adoption of the ordinance to September.
Will those public hearings be at City Hall?
The the public hearing will be at the Zoom format on July twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor Baker.
Yes, Councilmember File.
Thank you. Ms. Debbie Bent, I'm a little concerned about having a July twenty-seventh public hearing when we can't really ensure that we could have a good full participation of the community. We're assuming that people all have access to internet and ability to use Zoom and equipment and technology to do so. So I do believe that we have to find a way to make this a healthy process if we do go forward, and it cannot be only restricted to Zoom. I'd like to to know what my fellow council members feel about that.
Mayor.
City Manager, there was talk about having City Hall open for public comment with a video so that we all could see and hear. Has any thought been given to that?
Yeah, I'd like our city attorney, Don Rayton, to weigh in on it this, but so you can like set up city council chambers.
Yeah.
You can still have a full Zoom meeting with the screen up and everything, and you can provide council chambers as a place for the public to come and listen in. But I also believe that we're in phase two, and we're probably going to still be in phase two on the twenty-seventh, which I think limits group sizes to a certain number. So that's where I'm lost.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Seniors aren't to participate in those larger group gatherings until phase four. So I really, I'm thinking about our diverse community and inclusion in this process and the importance of a public hearing process and our fairness to the process to our community.
If I can just say that people like a regular council meeting can also submit their comments in writing ahead of the meeting to be read into the public record. So it's similar to you to your public comment process tonight. So we also put the the notice out on the website and advertise that as widely as we can, and we have had discussions with the city attorney to make sure that we are in compliance with the OPMA regulations.
Yeah, that would be my concern. As long as we are in compliance with OPMA, then great. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, and as we saw today, people can also participate in the Zoom meeting through the phone. So I understand some of the access issues with, you know, requiring a laptop or smartphone or that sort of thing. I think between being able to submit things in writing ahead of time and being able to call in on the phone, that that will afford, I believe that will afford enough access for the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to quickly address the question about people coming to City Hall currently under the proclamations for the OPMA and just the twenty twenty-five stay home or stay or stay healthy. We can't have in-person meetings. In fact, the OPMA waivers were revised to only allow meetings that do not that are not held in person. And I concur that the minimum of written testimony being allowed in and the telephonic access should provide sufficient access to people and and provide the due process for a public hearing. I'd be more much more concerned if we were thinking about opening up City Hall to a number of people. That would be more, I'd be more conservative violating the governor's proclamations by doing that.
Thank you, Mrs. Ratan. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
If there are no other preliminary questions, I would like to ask Lori to share her screen for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Baker and council members. I am going to share my screen now. I have a PowerPoint presentation. And as Debbie mentioned, it will provide a sort of background information and also the contrast between what the council approved in February and and what the Planning Commission recommendation was. So hold on a minute and we'll get this. Uh oh. It says post-disabled participant screen sharing.
Mayor or Mayor, I'm sorry, I was just saying that. Lori, let me let me fix that right now. That was my issue. Go ahead. Try it again.
Okay, thank you. All right, here we go. See here. Okay. So I'm going to start right here with a review of where we've been and where we're thinking of going. So you'll recall that back in January, gosh, six months, seven months ago, the Planning Commission presented their recommendations to you. In February, you considered the amendments and made some changes, and then you discussed the remaining issues and and one of those was tabled until March sixteenth, and then March sixteenth was the first meeting that was not held as a result of the pandemic. So tonight, you'll look at those preliminary amendments and some remaining questions, and then, as Debbie mentioned, the city council public hearing may be scheduled for the twenty-seventh. So in your preliminary recommendations, one of the things you addressed was the number and types of accessory dwelling units on a lot. And please stop me at any time if you have questions. So the recommendation that you made that evening was that you would have one ADU either attached or detached on a lot less than eight thousand square feet. And then on larger lots, you can have two ADUs, either one attached and one detached or two attached. The Planning Commission was considering two ADUs, only one attached and one detached, and detached ADUs were prohibited on lots less than forty-five hundred square feet. For ADU maximum size for attached units, your recommendation was one thousand your recommendation was one thousand square feet or the full size of a single floor. The Planning Commission had a similar recommendation, one thousand square feet, but they had a special approval process where the city manager and his designee could determine that it was okay to efficiently use pre-existing floor area. For detached ADU maximum heights, you had the same recommendation as the Planning Commission, thirty-five feet maximum height, but only a single story over a detached garage or two stories if built at ground level. Parking, the Planning Commission had recommended one parking space required for each ADU. City council recommendation was that no parking space should be required. Owner occupancy, the council was requiring owner occupancy at the time of permit application until the point where the certificate of occupancy was received for the permit. And then after the certificate of occupancy was received, there would be no owner occupancy requirement. The Planning Commission did want owner occup, did recommend owner occupancy, although the city manager was allowed to consider an exception for up to a year in cases of hardship or when a close relative of the owner was occupying the residence and acting in his or her stead. The issue of owner occupancy is one of the questions that we're going to bring back tonight that came up in some conversations with Development Services and how the ADU permits are actually processed. So you'll see that again momentarily. For door locations, there was a design requirement in the current code that said you couldn't have entrances on the same, two entrances on the same street side of a building. City council eliminated that restriction. The Planning Commission had retained it, but said that only if the ADU entrance was clearly secondary to the primary entrance. And then rear yard setbacks, again, a shared recommendation in the R-four and R-six zoning districts that require a twenty-foot rear yard, the ADU could be placed in that yard, but no closer than ten feet to the rear lot line. So for tonight, and the amendments that are included in your packet reflect all of those recommendations that you had made. But the issue that was tabled had to do with detached ADU maximum size. And then, as I mentioned, we need to talk about owner occupancy considerations raised by Development Services. So for detached ADU maximum size, this is an option that you discussed on February twenty-fourth. It seemed to be the most popular option, but there was not a vote taken on it. So there was no direction given on this issue. The predominant view at that time was that for lots greater than or equal to six thousand square feet, the maximum floor area would be ten percent of the lot area, up to a maximum of fifteen hundred square feet. And for lots less than six thousand square feet, the maximum size would be six hundred square feet. The Planning Commission recommendation had different breakpoints. At greater than or equal to ten thousand, it could be one thousand square feet. Between fifty-four hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, it could be eight hundred square feet. At forty-five hundred to fifty-three ninety-nine, that's six hundred square foot limitation. But the maximum building footprint was capped at ten percent of the lot area. And in the agenda bill, this particular topic was noted that if the council wishes to pursue this, this approach, that you might also want to talk about capping the building footprint at ten percent of the lot area for those smaller lots. And then the owner occupancy considerations, the current recommendation, again, requires an owner occupant to apply, and then those requirements are extinguished with the certificate of occupancy. But the issue that was raised by Development Services is that developers build spec houses with ADUs. And if you could only allow an owner or occupant to apply, that limits the practice. The other thing is that when owners of attached ADUs occupy one of the units, they get a decreased construction cost because different fire separation requirements apply. And the owner occupancy affidavits are what are used to verify this classification that allows them to have this lesser firewall, fire separation requirement. So for this topic, options to consider would be to require a developer building a new house in ADU to provide an affidavit stating that their buyer intends to live in the house. And that would prevent speculative development, which was what the city council was concerned about. That's what was expressed on February twenty-fourth. Or you could move to an owner occupancy requirement for a specified period of time and have an affidavit recorded that would be extinguished at the end of that time period. You heard the, the comment from the Seattle King County Realtors who were suggesting six months would be an appropriate period of time in their letter supporting amendments overall. Or you could remove the owner occupancy requirement altogether. So at this point, I would stop sharing my screen and have a conversation unless there's a question that would require that I go back some previous slides.
I have a question.
Sure.
Councilmember Curtis, you go ahead.
Can we go back one slide?
Okay, well, this is going to be a test.
Okay.
See whether I can do it. Ah. Is that the slide you wanted?
No, I guess to go back another slide then. So the issue is, it doesn't feel like either of the three options discuss what we were trying to accomplish. So I was looking for the, what the.
Oh, the three options for owner occupancy.
Correct. So maybe it's one more page back. So wherever you sort of summarized what we had talked about in February.
Well, these were the owner occupancy considerations. Is this? Here, let's see here. We'll go back. Because earlier in the slide presentation, I know there's an easier way to do this, but I don't know how. So you'll have to suffer with my. Here we go. Is this what you were looking for?
Yes. So required the time of permit application and until the certificate of occupancy is received. And then after the certificate of occupancy, no requirement.
Right.
So it, which of those three options most closely captures this idea? To me, it doesn't feel like any of them do.
Well, the problem is, if, if the intent, if the council's intent really was to say no one should build an ADU except an owner who lives in the house, then the, probably the best approach would be to say that you can't build speculative houses with ADUs. So you wouldn't let someone come in, a builder come in and apply to build both a house and an ADU for sale. So you could do that. It's limiting, obviously, and could restrict the number of ADUs that would be built. But that is probably, if that was the council's intent.
Because I think.
To stop all speculative building.
I think my concern at the time was for us to suddenly start putting triplexes, in essence, on every lot that's over eight, six thousand square feet or whatever our cutoff was.
Eight thousand.
Because it's an attached and a detached. That's like building triplexes on every relatively small lot in the city. I don't want that. So, so I'm not sure which of those captures. I think, I think it's option one.
Right. I would say it's option one.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me see if I understand this then. So I've got a lot, ten thousand square feet. A developer comes in, and he wants to buy my house and gets, and he buys my house with the understanding he's going to put on two ADUs. He gets the permit from the city. He's, he's staying, he's going to stay in the house, and he builds his two ADUs and boom, he's gone. Is that what we're going to be allowing here?
So the idea was that you would have the owner occupant be the person applying for the permit.
Right.
So I suppose if the developer, maybe it should be specified that it would be the occupant. If you specify.
He could be the occupant.
Pardon?
He could be the occupant. The developer would be the occupant.
Right, correct.
And then get the permits, build two units, and boom, he's gone.
That would be the same with an owner in, under this scenario.
He needed to own the property, but now he's got a bunch of rentals. And he could do this all over town and end up with a whole bunch of rentals. So now, instead of owner occupied, we have rental units everywhere. Is that what we're trying to do?
I think, Mayor, that this is a question the council needs to discuss. I can't really speak to your motivations.
I'm sorry, I can't find my hand raising tool. I just want to put my name in queue for.
Yeah, no, no, go ahead. Councilmember McCain, please.
What I, I have a question and a comment. So Ms. Anderson, if you could give me an estimate of how many ADUs we project to have built in the next ten years?
Right.
So I think that's really important towards what we're thinking about when limiting or by requiring owner occupancy. What, what we don't require owner occupancy for would be in triplexes or apartments. And I think when we came to this, we discussed this really not about speculative new development. It was really about ADUs for homeowners. So, but I just, I just was curious because it's one of those things, we can require it. But my understanding, at least based on the research that I have done, there's really no proof that owner occupancy makes a difference. It's, it's just, it's almost words, but are we really managing that requirement? And, and what kind of follow-throughs do we have? But I'm just curious about how many, how many ADUs do we project? Because they're expensive to build for normal homeowners.
So when we did the environmental review, and it was based on the Planning Commission's recommendations, we estimated that there were going to be approximately a hundred and forty-five new units that looked at the number of lots and where you could have two, where previously you could only have one, et cetera. I don't have the numbers based on the new city council recommendation, which is, would change those numbers, although I'm not sure it would be a significant change. So say a hundred and fifty, maybe a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty. And that would be if, pretty much, following a pattern of how many ADUs have typically been built.
In a year, it could be like a hundred and fifty in a year, or a hundred and fifty in ten years, five years.
Overall, it would be overall.
Overall for the city, for a period. So we're talking about a relatively, I would say, small number of ADUs to be built that we're looking at here. But we are looking at the intention, my understanding for the council, why we would be looking at opening opportunity for our residents to build ADUs is to meet affordability needs in our community and meet, and expand our housing stock, which I think are really high priorities. I know the council knows that my, my leaning is no homeowner occupancy. So I would err on the side of anything that is lower among, among the decisions that we're making today. And I'm comfortable saying that. Thank you.
Can we go back to the page with the three options?
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, first off, I want to thank staff for taking what was, at the end of the last meeting where we had this discussion, a very convoluted attempt at getting some amendments put together on top of amendments and top of amendments. And I think what you pulled together for the detached ADUs is in line with what we were thinking. And I appreciate you figuring that out after the fact, because it was a late meeting, and we were all getting a little bit loopy, and things got very complicated. So I think you did great work there, and I appreciate that. As far as owner occupancy goes, I'm kind of of the mind that it's going to be hard for us to enforce anything around this. We're hoping that people are signing affidavits and then sticking to it. We're not going to have really any enforcement mechanism on this. I don't want to set something up where we have an expectation of city staff needing to enforce this or down the road, because I just think this becomes kind of a sticky thing. So I'm inclined towards not having an owner occupancy requirement in here.
I would like to pee back on what W. Baker just said. Pardon me, W. Nigel Herbig, which is that, you know, really, we're trying to attach something for our community to be able to have a source of revenue that can help families have housing within our community and also help people stay and retire in our community with a source of revenue to help them financially with sustainability. The owner occupancy requirement is a deterrent. Not only is it a deterrent, but should you have someone who is building a home and a ADU and possibly has children, you're increasing the risk of injury or possibility of injury to, to families. I, I really believe that the owner occupancy requirement is a limitation that doesn't do anything to help build more housing. It just helps limit that housing to be developed when we are in a housing crisis, crisis and shortage. So it's sort of a no live-in requirement.
Mayor, are you there?
Yes, Milton Curtis.
So it feels like that's a kind of an argument on both sides. You're, you're saying that one of the purposes is to give people a chance to build an ADU so they can stay in their place. But what, if we eliminate all requirements, what we're doing is we're allowing speculation and builders and contractors to make money. And I, I understand we want to increase ADUs so we can have more affordable housing. I totally agree. I would be curious if the numbers that were gathered, like my house could easily be divided upstairs, downstairs, is that one of the predicted ADUs that would come over the next ten years? Don't know the answer to that. But I still think we have a community that we need to listen to. And I think if a triplex shows up on a small lot next to people's house, we are going to get a lot of negative feedback, and I, and I don't really want to see that anyway. A triplex equivalent on a small lot in a, you know, community neighborhood just feels out of place.
May I? I think that, I mean, at least related to owner occupancy, I don't see that tying into the triplex issue. I think when we're looking at owner occupancy, making a requirement for such a small port, an outlier, an outlier, I'm losing my word. That the chances, we're managing to the exception rather than the rule. And when we're looking at a hundred and fifty or so units, managing five to ten per year or however many owner occupants with affidavits or whatever it is that we're trying to do to limit the, this small number of ADUs. I, that's why I lean towards no homeowner occup, owner occupancy. Because it's, the scale doesn't merit, merit, merit it, and I don't, it's from. And I don't, is from what I've seen, the owner occupancy requirement doesn't pan out statistically as a reduction in ADUs or limiting that speculation. So I think that's important to give consideration to. The scale at what we're putting an ordinance in or a requirement in for the building of ADUs, I just, I, I don't think it's, it's necessary. And also when we're looking at other rental-type properties and that sort of thing, owner occupancy is not required. And-
Councilmember Marshall, do you have anything, or Councilmember Shrubnik? Yeah, Councilmember Marshall, please.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Anderson, so I just wanted to affirm, I didn't get much support last time. And I don't think that, justifiably, we didn't follow up with anything or with some of my major concerns. So I just wanted to reiterate that to the rest of the council in the hopes that we might be able to get some momentum for some positive change in that direction. The first one is that the majority of our tree canopy is in this residential zone. There's no protection in the, these ADU ordinances for the tree canopy. I would definitely like to see something on that preserving our trees. We build these, we approve this stuff, we're going to get mature Douglas firs, the signature and hallmark of our community chopped down. That's going to inexorably alter our, you know, post-World War II residential zoning here. Secondly, I think that the, I, I don't see anything about keeping side yards free of storage or other issues, which continuously baffles me as to how fire is going to get through side yards to the ADU in the back when there will be items blocking. So the danger to life and property that, that presents. So I have an issue with there not being any protection for trees and the inevitable cutting down of trees that this is going to result in. The danger to life when you're putting units in the backyard without access or at least a provision for, to keep the side yards clear for fire. And I think that we really ought to focus our affordable housing goals, not in something like this. You've got to remember, and, and, you know, for those of us, or all of us, I think have been members of the community at least for a long time, you remember how suburbia ages. Suburbia can get run down and can go towards uses that are not safe and with repeated code violations. It's an odd situation, but it does happen and can happen regularly. I think the possibility of that happening, when you add additional units in the backyard where they can't be seen, or less seen, surrounded by fences, trees, vegetation, what, what have you, you're going to have more code violations and more of a danger to the city and at the same time altering the character of our community beyond recognition. I would like to see a map still, if, if at all possible, of the properties that might be affected. Thank you.
Anybody else here? The way this screen is laid out, it makes it difficult to see everybody. Deputy Mayor, anything? Councilmember Shrubnik, anything? Yes, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yes, I, I, yeah, thank you. I am supportive of getting more ADU units, and I think we all are. I think the, having an owner occupancy requirement, which is the second option here, moves an owner occupancy requirement at a reasonable amount of time, six months, kind of is a middle ground where we're basically supporting the idea that folks should be able to stay in their homes if they can, modify them to make some income. And, you know, to boot, we get, you know, some additional units in our city, which is, you know, definitely a goal. I think the, you know, if we move to not having an owner occupancy requirement or the kind of convoluted first option, which just seems like it's a recipe or, you know, both, both of those make whole areas extremely attractive for speculative development. You know, the way that our city is laid out now, there are certain neighborhoods that have larger lots and certain neighborhoods that don't. And so those neighborhoods with larger lots would just being, become, because they could now be essentially, as Milton, Councilmember Curtis said, they could all become triplexes. They, you know, the property value to those developers, you know, definitely goes up. I mean, it goes up for the homeowner too, I suppose. But, you know, you, you get more of an opportunity for speculative development, which I, I don't think we want at a wholesale, whole neighborhood level. I think the kind of slow modulated implementation that would happen if we have it with homeowner, I think, the process to create those additional units at a, at a pace would accomplish the goal without being kind of a shock to whole areas of the city.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Councilmember Curtis?
I would just say I could support option two. Deborah, if you wanted to make a motion.
Are we there yet, Ms. Anderson?
I, I do need a response on this. So if you're ready. Again, this is, these are the, I will say, these are the preliminary recommendations. They will be the ones that will go out for public review and would be the substance of your public hearing on the 27th. Your final action would not occur until after the public hearing.
Right.
So you're, what, what you'd be voting on and what you did on the 24th was vote, actually, are the preliminary recommendations.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yeah, and if Councilmember Curtis was asking me a question before, I, it was all breaking up. So I, I had a motion, I couldn't quite tell what he was asking.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we look at option number two. Move to owner occupancy for the specified period of time, six months, sounds fine to me.
Councilmember Shrubnik, you want?
I'm happy to second that.
Perfect, okay. So we got a motion and a second. Option number two, move to an owner occupancy requirement for a specified period of time. For example, six months or one year. Any further discussion on that topic?
I think your motion, Councilmember Curtis-
Wrong question.
Councilmember Curtis, did you speak to specifically six months period of time rather than six months or a year? I guess this is still for proposal that I, I just wanted to add at the end.
I said six months, because it looks like I have an option here. And I think the six months would, would get the, the basic owner occupancy going. And I don't want to be tracking things over the long haul, so I'm okay with six months.
This, this feels closest to what we agreed on in our previous meeting, too. I, I, I think that six months is reasonable based on that.
All right, so the mo, a motion is to move to an owner occupancy requirement for six months.
There we go.
And have an affidavit recorded that would be extinguished at the end of that required six months. Any further discussion? Got to get to the other screen here. Any further discussion? Councilmember File or Deputy Mayor? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll?
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik? Yes? Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
No.
That was a yes, Councilmember File?
No, that was a no.
Oh, a no, okay, I'm glad I clarified.
All right, motion passes, one. You want to continue, Ms. Anderson?
Right, so the only other thing that we were looking for, for preliminary direction was the question of the detached ADU maximum size. Again, this was the option you discussed, but you did not give any direction on this. Excuse me, this was the option that was tabled to March 16th. So this is where, again, the predominant view that I heard, but there was no action taken. Here's the Planning Commission recommendation. From staff's perspective, I think we would, if this is in fact the direction you wished to head, we would encourage you to look at this Planning Commission limitation that caps the maximum building footprint for small lots. So for 600 square feet, less than 6,000, maybe you want to cap that, either 600 but capped at 10% of lot area.
Can I ask a question on this, please? If with a 10,000 square foot lot, I could build a 1,000 square foot dwelling, can I build a two-story dwelling that's 1,000 square feet each, each floor?
No. If you're asking about an ADU, no, this is total square footage.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I can't see who's right. Oh, Councilmember O'Kane.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Baker. Ms. Anderson, I just want to commend you and thank you for your synthesis of that discussion that we had at the end of the meeting. You tidied up this decision beautifully. And it was, I, I, we, thank you, is all I have to say, because this really did the essence of what I was hoping. I mean, I think several, there were some extra pieces. But personally, I, I, I am very, I think this looks great. I also think that, you know, I, I personally lean towards going as is. A 600 square foot might not take too much space off, off a smaller lot. So that 10%, I, I think might just be covered with that. But anyway, what I'm trying to say is I really support what you put together as is without any further requirements. So thank you.
Questions?
Question?
Further questions? Councilmember Marshall? Nope. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that Lori did a great job pulling all this together from that complete tangle of amendments that we had at the last meeting. And I think that I, I support what, what she has there as what we discussed on the 24th.
All right, so, Councilmember Curtis?
So I don't think we need to put that little phrase, maximum 10%. I'm happy with just kind of what Lori's summary of our confusion was, the, the upper half of the slide. Because it feels like if you have a 4,500 square foot lot, 10% of that is only 450 feet. So it means you can only use 450 feet, if I'm understanding that right, out of your whole lot. And that doesn't seem to make sense to me. So, so I think the upper half is fine.
So just for clarification, we own Planning Commission recommendations or City Council?
City Council. Do we need a motion?
We do.
I'd be happy to make a motion to proceed with the City Council option discussed on February 24th.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Sorry, just wanted to make sure I got that down. As this relates to detached ADU maximum size. Okay, Councilmember Shrubnik? Councilmember-
Hi, yes.
Yes, okay. Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Okay, six, one.
Six, one. All right, Ms. Anderson?
Yes. So there are four remaining items from your agenda bill. And you can decide whether you want to steer any of these items to us for future research and consideration. The Planning Commission forwarded these four. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen because this is not going to be helpful. But the four items were consideration of pre-approved plans and expedited permit processing, educational efforts, which would be a staff effort to provide more educational information about ADUs, an amnesty program, which would be a way for the city to give people an opportunity to bring perhaps illegal ADUs into compliance, that's a health safety effort. And then lending or financial assistance options. That would be something that we would steer to arch, I would expect. But the question is whether any of those were intriguing enough to you that you would like us to pursue them. We don't have a recommendation about how to do that, but we would add that to our list of things to investigate. So do you want to take them one by one?
Well, I have a question. So I, I thought we had agreed that prior-built ADUs would be grandfathered in after this point. So were we not clear on that, or?
I did not hear that. And so that may be, may well be my mistake, but I did not hear that as a direction.
Well, I think that's important, that we, we need to consider that. Here, we haven't had a standard quite transparent. And I believe that grandfathering in prior ADUs would be an appropriate action to take.
I think, if I might follow up a little bit, I think my only caution would be a blanket statement that, that endorses prior ADUs, which may have life safety issues. If they have not been reviewed, they are potentially not up to the city's code. So I'm not sure you would want to be in a position to say that an ADU that does not meet our life safety codes is therefore okay and legitimate.
We did talk about this before. And I, I am aware that we said if they were to expand, they would need to update to current code. Very certain that we had that conversation.
I, I, I remember that conversation, Councilmember File. I do recall, I think we did, I, I, it's, it's been several months. But I think due to the fact that they haven't been regulated to this point, you know, it, it didn't seem to make, make sense. It seemed to make sense that we would grandfather them in at the time. I can't, I really, I recall the conversation, I can't remember where it landed.
I'm sorry. Oh, Councilmember Marshall?
Yeah, I, I certainly would defer and urge everybody to follow, at least, Ms. Anderson's recommendation that we're absolutely not going to be okaying any sort of pre-existing ADU that's already in code violation and that presents a danger to life or health or safety. I certainly would hope that. I'm not in favor of allowing or permitting illegal ADUs, previously illegal ADUs, from being permitted henceforth at all. I think that's unethical, it's not right. It's a signal to encourage people to build stuff illegally and unsafely. But if you're going to go that far and say, hey, that's cool, then at least please defer to Ms. Anderson on her most previous statement that they should, should follow the code. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Kane?
I'm sorry for interrupting, I'm, I'm, wasn't sure who was next.
Is there a question there?
Yeah, I did have, I just wanted to say, I recall the conversation, especially being in particular, that an ADU wouldn't have to be removed or taken out that had already been put in. Does this, there was something in the Planning Commission that had something to do with, and I think it was removed.
Right. That conversation-
What I really, that's what I recall, the conversation around. I do think being up to code is important. So I would, I recommend, I recognize what you said related to that as well as Councilmember Marshall, so thank you.
All right. Any other que, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I, I think an amnesty of some sort does make sense as long as folks- does make sense as long as folks are up to safety regulations when they come in. Just to kind of get them in the clearer and make sure the folks are living in safe places. I think that makes sense. I, I wouldn't want to just blanket grandfather all of them. And I don't think that that is safe for folks because there could be, there could be ADUs out there right now that aren't safe for folks. And we should be able to regulate on those folks or enforce if we need to in those cases. But I, going to kind of Ms. Anderson's question, I like the ideas of the pre-approved plans and expedited permit processing. I like the idea of educational efforts. And I like the amnesty program. I'm not sure if I'm quite there yet with lending and financial assistance options, but I like those first three off the bat.
Anyone else? Yes. Councilmember Shrubnik?
This is Councilmember Shrubnik. Yeah. So I completely concur with Councilmember Herbig on the first three. And I just wanted to hear Lori just say what the amnesty piece is. I think we're understanding it correctly, that it's basically intended to kind of bring the existing ADUs into the light. But that it wouldn't be permitting them unless they met the health safety and potentially all co, I guess I'm not clear what it means.
Right. And I'm not exactly clear what it means at this point either. This was an idea that a number of jurisdictions have tried, and we don't have the specifics of the program. The basic idea is that you offer folks an opportunity to make their sort of hidden ADUs legitimate. And in the course of doing that, you know, you, you're not supposed to sell a house, for example, with an AD. You, you shouldn't on your sales documents be saying you have an ADU if you don't have a legal ADU. That's a problem. So there may be people who are interested in legitimizing their ADUs. It gives the city a chance to look for life safety issues to make sure that they're appropriate for having someone live in it. So the idea would be if you're remotely interested in the concept, then we would spend some time looking at what a program might include, look at some other programs from other places, and bring it back to you. I mean, we haven't sketched it out.
But if I just might say that any of the options that Lori has just laid out are separate from the action on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So you do not give us any direction on any of those to move forward with the ADU ordinance. So if you want to do any of these things, this would be an additional work program. And this would not be a work program for this year, 2020. So if you are interested, maybe we can get direction on the 27th when you've had time to consider it a little bit more. Or we can bring these forward as suggestions for a future docket item for 2021 or later.
Councilmember O'Kane, you had a question?
I think it was covered. Councilmember Shrubnik spoke to what I.
Councilmember Curtis?
So along with Deputy Mayor Herbig, I agree that the first three are worth looking at. I wouldn't want to spend much time doing pre-approved plans. If somebody in Puget Sound is doing it and we could borrow theirs, I think that's fine. But honestly, I don't think very many people are going to be plopping an extra building in their backyard. I think it's going to be basements that are going to be turned into ADUs. I think it's going to be rooms over garages. I think it'll be mostly attached. So if we can do it easy, that's fine. But I wouldn't spend a lot of time in our building department creating anything. Expediting permit, I guess, sounds like that kind of goes together. Education, I, I don't see that as a huge spend-time work effort, but let, to let people know, hey, we've created some new ways for people to stay in their houses and so get some affordable housing. And in the amnesty program, like we say, let people have the ADUs, but bring them up to safety standards. And I'm not in favor of getting into the financing thing at all.
When I co-chaired the, the Affordable Housing Task Force for the county, one of the things we looked at was ADUs and pre-approved plans. And that was something that a number of cities had indicated it would be of huge benefit if there was a number of plans that were pre-approved, that somebody could walk into the counter and said, I want to build an ADU in my yard. What do you have? We could hand them a set of plans that could be scaled, and they were pre-approved, and they could go forth and build with minimal hassle and minimal expense. So I think that's one of the things that we should be trying to do in the community and make it easier for people who want to build in, in their, in their yard. And actually, to be all fair with this, this was Ms. Anderson's lot. She had heard it from somewhere else, and she gave it to me, which I took to the Housing Task Force.
So I think I probably have enough information to sense that there's some interest from the council on the first three, limited interest on the last one, and that these are something that we could think about bringing back to you at some point as part of a work plan.
Councilmember? Councilmember Shrubnik, did you have something?
No, I already said I concur.
Okay, great. Fine.
All right.
I think there's agreement here.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Comprehensive Plan 2020 Docket, Work Program Update and Affordable Housing Review Process. Mrs. Bent? And again, Mrs. Anderson? We can't get enough of you guys today.
Oh, I know. You're muted, Debbie.
There you go. So council did approve the docket in January for the, for the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission started work on that docket, and then that stopped in February due to COVID, and they haven't met since. So currently, the Planning Commission are working on the pros element for the comprehensive plan, and they will be holding a public hearing next week. And they'll be bringing forward that recommendation later in the fall with any other comprehensive plan amendments. So that's what the Planning Commission are working on now. The next item that we're suggesting they work on would be the process for reuse of tax-exempt or publicly-owned property when there is an affordable housing component. And also for private development where there's a affordable housing component. So that would be the next topic we would like the Planning Commission to work on. And there are a series of questions that we can go over tonight if there is any sort of overarching direction for the framework for that discussion for the Planning Commission. The missing middle affordable housing, that would be a very large work program item. And so what we are suggesting that is, given that we're already six months into the year, is that we would hold a joint meeting in September, October, with the Planning Commission and council to discuss that topic. But moving forward with that would then be deferred to 2021. The incentives for office development, again, given the timing for where we are in the year, we're also recommending that that be deferred to a future docket, 2021 or later. So that's kind of what we wanted to let you know is we need to adapt the schedule for discussion of these topics. So we'd like your concurrence on that. And really, what we want tonight is direction on some of the framework for that topic, for the housing, for affordable housing on those publicly-owned properties or private properties. So I'm now going to turn it over to Lori. And I'm sorry, Lori, if I said what you were going to say, but.
Oh, you just said the first half. So I am going to just put up a, a slide. And again, this is not for action. This is just for general discussion, a short, brief discussion, to kind of get a sense of where the council's interest lies in this affordable housing process discussion. So let me put up the slide, and I think it'll make a little bit more sense. So these, this is distilling down the questions that were in your agenda bill. And, and specifics are not what is needed necessarily because the Planning Commission will be working on this project. But for example, the first question, at what level of affordability should a special review process be available? Is this for very low income? Is this for 60% to 70% lower income? Just, we were looking for a very general sense of when it should be available. What percentage of units in the development should be affordable? Is this part of the development? Is this only to be used for a development that's totally affordable? Should senior housing projects be eligible regardless of level of affordability? So in the county, senior housing is always considered affordable housing. And so one approach would be to say, if you're doing a senior housing project, it would automatically be eligible for this process regardless of affordability. What size of project should be able to take advantage of the process? Is this for very small projects? Is this only for projects, large projects? What level of project decision-making is appropriate? Is this something that could be administrative? Lessening the time certainly reduces the cost. But then again, this is an unusual situation where we're allowing some flexibility, perhaps in development standards, and maybe a higher level of review is appropriate. And then should limitations on project appeals be considered? It's really late tonight, and these are meaty topics. And I wish we had a lot of time to delve more into it. But perhaps what we could do is just have sort of your top-of-mind thoughts generally for a few minutes. And what we'll do then is forward whatever we hear onto the Planning Commission as we introduce this topic.
All right. Anybody? Anyone with comments, questions? Yes, Councilmember Curtis?
So I don't really understand in question number one, what is special review process? What are we talking about?
Yeah. So this project is to look at a type of review process. I don't know whether it would be a special development agreement or it would be a certain type of a project permit to allow a, an affordable housing project to get through the process more quickly, more efficiently, and perhaps with some waiver of typical development standards. It's to put in place the opportunity when we hear from someone that they want to do an affordable housing project, to make it easier for them to achieve that. That's the goal. And it was looking at this type of a review process was in the Housing Strategy Plan as one of the approaches to look at supporting affordable housing.
So then the second question, you talked about building affordable housing on public property? What property are you talking about?
Not any specific property. It's, it's public property in general. The Metro Park and Ride is a property that comes to mind.
Okay, so not 10 more property necessarily, but any public property?
Any public property.
Got it.
Nonprofit property, churches, church property might be an option. And then we had a private request with someone who wanted to do an affordable housing project on their own piece of property. And that was included to be looked at through this project, not for approval of the project itself, but just is that type of a project something that we would give a special opportunity to, to enhance building of affordable housing?
And I just wanted to be clear here. Usually when we're talking about senior affordable housing, we are also coupling that with housing for persons with disabilities, correct?
You could. In the zoning code, it, it doesn't make, it doesn't link those two. Senior is specifically defined in the zoning code, but there's no reason that couldn't be expanded.
Then I would like to move that we expand that and include it and have it include housing for persons with disabilities.
This is, this is Councilmember Shrubnik. I'm, I'm, maybe it's late, but I'm trying to track what we're being asked for tonight.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, this.
Oh, that's okay. We have a motion on the floor.
No, we got a motion, but it died for lack of second.
Oh, okay. I wanted to be sure.
Interrupted with a question.
So these, these questions are the policy kind of questions that we would be chatting with the Planning Commission about for this topic. And so what we're trying to figure out then is if there is anything that you specifically want the Planning Commission to take a look at as part of this work program item. And if there isn't, then we would kind of still go to the Planning Commission with these questions, and the Planning Commission would then do what they do. They do the policy-level review, and they would come back with a recommendation. So this is just sort of a preliminary opportunity for council to provide input. That's all it is.
And I like the disability addition that Councilmember File mentioned.
So do I. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would, I think this is a great list of questions. I don't have additional questions. I, I would definitely separate the issue of expedited review versus changing the standards. I think those are two, two very separate things. I'd love to see affordable housing projects go to the front of the line. I think we'd have to think carefully about what are the things we would remove in terms of standards? That feels very different.
Councilmember Marshall, would you like to make that motion?
Actually, I would just second Councilmember File's motion then about.
That motion died because there was no second.
Oh, I'll make a motion again then.
Motion to bring it back.
I'll make a motion again then.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Mayor Baker. The motion was interrupted by a question by Councilmember Shrubnik.
There was at least 30 seconds of silence between that. So I'm trying to bring it back for you now. Councilmember Marshall?
I'll, I'll make the motion to add disability to senior housing projects.
Right. Now, is there a second?
I second that.
Perfect. All right. So we have a motion and a second to add disability to the zoning code for seniors. Is that correct?
I, I have a question.
Okay, let's get this, let's get the motion.
I guess, I want to clarify this one.
Right, that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay. So why does it need to be added to senior? Why can't it just be added?
Yes.
Senior or disability?
Yeah. Okay, or disability.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to clarify. All right. Kelly, do you have that?
I think so. Yes.
All right. So there's a motion then to say or disability.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Councilmember Marshall and Councilmember File agree to that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So any further discussion on the motion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Passed.
Perfect. All right. Ms. Anderson?
I don't really have anything to add. As Debbie pointed out, all we're looking for is whether you have some general thoughts about this that beyond the couple that I've written down that you want us to pass on to the Planning Commission?
Comment?
Yes, Councilmember Curtis?
At the highest level, I would agree with Councilmember Shrubnik that anything that moves an affordable housing project along faster, I'm in favor of it.
And I concur with a Councilmember Curtis.
You're breaking up, Councilmember File. You're breaking up, Councilmember File.
I said I concur with Councilmember Milton Curtis and Councilmember Deborah Shrubnik.
Perfect. All right. Ms. Anderson? You got direction?
Mayor, Deputy Mayor Herbig has his hand up.
Deputy Mayor Herbig. Yeah, I can't see it. It's on a different page. Deputy Mayor Herbig, please.
I'll forgive you. I'm not next to you to elbow you.
No, right.
I, yeah, no, I want to second what Councilmember Curtis said. Anything that's going to get us more affordable housing faster. I mean, that's, that's the goal of this whole thing. So that's my general direction. I don't know what the specific affordability levels are or any of that. But I look forward to seeing what the planning commission brings back. And I just, whatever we can do to be as aggressive as possible would be great.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Nebenzahl. We're going to talk about environmental sustainability initiatives and propose next steps.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Good evening, everyone. So on June 22nd, we kind of gave you the introduction of part one, which was kind of looking at a bunch of different options would be the Climate Action Plan, which we are looking to move forward and kind of giving the phase by phase process with that. And I kind of gave you a timeline last time, but I'll quickly just go through that timeline again as of starting this week, actually, with your approval to work with Cascadia, which I'll go over in the contract next. We're looking to hopefully start doing the greenhouse gas inventories and that's phase one of this Climate Action Plan, hopefully concluding by the end of the year 2020, followed by establishing the reduction targets in the first quarter of 2021. And then following that, phase three would be developing the Climate Action Plan itself with the rest of the staff as well as a community involvement and engagement, which would take place during the rest of 2021, followed by implementation as well as monitoring, which would take place over the, the following years, starting basically 2022. We also proposed at least three other projects. One that I did want to highlight specifically was Tree City USA. Councilmember Shrubnik did propose a question about the money and the $2 per capita and what could be spent and where, where that money would be coming from. And so I did want to just clarify that I did reach out to Tree City USA and they did give me a whole list of expenses that could be used as that $2 per capita with it. And that did include city's worker salaries, contract work, tree board salary, tree purchases, water, fertilizing, insect control, staking, et cetera, et cetera. So basically, anything that has to do with the administration costs as well as the planting and removal of any trees necessary, which usually wouldn't happen, but in cases that it needed to happen, those all would go towards that. As well as we gave brief explanations if the council choose to direct staff to participate in this production, it would cost about $46,000 in the 2021, 22 biannual budget. And then based upon projected population growth, it would increase over time, as well as the Fort Terra Green Partnership, as well as SAM and SAFE certification, which staff decided that it would be good to look at, especially as we develop the Climate Action Plan, to discuss this in the 2021, 2022 biannual budget and at least further discuss that then. But as of right now, as council brought up before about whether that strategic operation should be used for that, we felt that it would be better discussed in future budget considerations. And then Rob's mentioned that he would like to talk more about the current staff requirements as he took a lead on that and gathering that information.
Is that my cue?
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry. That's okay. Yeah, so if you look in the, look at the memo that was written, if you go to the bottom of page three, you can see where that starts. Hopefully, you've been able to get a chance to read it. One council member, Councilmember Shrubnik, had a question about, now are these things that get eliminated or they're just impacted like they're delayed or slowed down? Like in the case of public works operations, it's more the latter, that they would just be impacted versus eliminated. But I think, I think we tried to be pretty clear whether they were delayed or impacted. But if any, if there are any other questions.